Evening, everyone, and welcome to the March eighteenth Committee of the Whole. And I'd like to start off by acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional territory of the Wurundjeri people. Committee, you've got the agenda in front of you. I understand there's some additions. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Under eight A, we've got the report for use of employee parking lot. And under nine, new business, I would like to have about five minutes of council's time to make a presentation regarding Artsy.
Okay. So you're moving the agenda as amended?
Correct.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other additions? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moving on then, our first item on the agenda is the four aid, which is the 2019 Grants in Aid. I understand that there are two members of committee who've got conflicts of interest on specific grant applications. Does anyone else have a conflict of interest that we should be aware of? Okay. And I guess for those two members, you have to declare the conflict. So you might as well explain what it is now, and then when we hit those particular items, you can recuse yourselves.
I have a conflict with the Sydney and Peninsula Literary Festival, and I will accuse myself at that time.
All right, I have three conflicts. Cycling Without Age Society, I was a founding board member, still a volunteer. Sydney Preschool Cooperative, I'm the incoming president. And Sydney Guide and Scout Hall Society, my sons and the Beavers that use that, Trupaul, and I'm parent volunteer, so.
Okay. I think that last one is an interest that's in common with all the parents, but I'll leave it up to you whether you want to recuse yourself or not. Okay. Counselor Fallon?
Mr. Chair, in light of just sort of where we were last year, in going through this, my recommendation is that I come out with a block of grant and aid requests and note their, the grant, and see if we can go with a consensus on approval. If anyone at the table wishes to take that out and look at a discussion, then we can certainly do that. But if I may, I'm just gonna start off and list my choices and see where council goes with that.
Okay. Just for the benefit of the audience, we have submissions that total approximately $75,000, and we have $15,000 in funds to distribute. So the requests are about five times the amount we have available. About 80%, maybe a bit more, are organizations that have previously applied for grants and received some funds. We have a small number that are completely new. So that is sort of for context. And certainly, if we go through each one of these carefully and detail, it'll take us a while. So I appreciate the suggestion that if there's an approach to expedite things, we should maybe give it a shot.
Okay, then. I'm looking at Peninsula Figure Skating Club. Last year, they received 500, and I would go with 500 for this year. Wurundjeri Peninsula Piranha Swim Club, 500 last year and 500 for this year. Wurundjeri Peninsula Pipe Band, same thing, 500 was given last year, and I would go with 500 for this year. Crisis Intervention and Public Information Society, they received 600 last year, I will do the same for this year. Peninsula Streams School Programs, 500 in eighteen and 500 for this year. Greater Victoria Bike to Work Society, 500 last year, 500 for this year. Six Seven Six Kitty Hawk Sponsoring Committee Society, they received 750 last year, I will do the same for this year. The Navy League of Canada, 750 and 750 for this year. And the Peninsula Dry Grad Society received 1,500 last year, and I would go with 1,500 this year. That brings that first lot to 6,100 out of the 15,000.
Okay. So I think the way this approach is being proposed, if anybody feels they would like to have a discussion about any one of these items, we'd simply pull it out of this group that's being proposed and deal with it in detail later on. But what I'm hearing is Counselor Fallon is proposing that these particular nine submissions get the same amount of money that was approved for them last year. And if there is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just a question to clarify. So basically, what you're doing now is just looking at the ones from last year that were approved? Is that correct? And so if that was the case, I'm just wondering whether the Sydney Guide and Scout Hall was also to be included, or?
That's not on the list.
That's not on the list.
Okay.
Because of conflict of interest.
Oh, yes. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Understood.
And there were some that were approved last year that aren't on the list, and I assume that's because either the amount is different, or it's proposed not to approve them. I guess the question for the committee is, here's a proposal, if everyone's comfortable with that, maybe we can just accept that particular group and move on.
If you're looking for a second, I'll second that, if that was a motion.
Okay. So that's a motion?
Yes.
And seconded? And I see some discussion, the mayor first, and then Counselor Garnet?
I only have one that I would question the amount, and that is the Peninsula Dry Grad Society. And I'm very much in favor of, or know the good things that is associated with the Dry Grad. My only concern is, we had 25 applicants, and all of the applicants but two filled out the application form and provided additional information, including most recent available financial information. And Dry Grad, as I have received it, did not complete the second page of the application, nor provided any financial information. And one of the reasons we ask for financial information is, as we've heard about being requested, or having five times the request, that what we can give is, we do have to consider need. All of these organizations do very good things and bring benefit to the community, but need does need to be considered. And in looking at financials, it helps see some organizations, you know, operating on the margins, or in others, not so. And we just have no indication about how the Peninsula Dry Grad Society is doing. And so in my allocation, I had reduced them to $1,000.
So the suggestion then would be to have a discussion about that particular one, it would be removed from this group and discussed later on? If that's acceptable?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Garnet, then Counselor O'Keefe, then Counselor Duncan?
So of the nine that were listed, I was in agreement with four of them. One was a little under, and actually, four of them I had down as not contributing anything, so.
So which ones would you like to have removed?
Figure Skating Club. My Pipe Band one was just a little bit less, so I mean, I could probably limit to 500 on that one.
Do you want to remove it from the list, or no?
Yeah, take it. Take it. Take it. Sure. The School Programs, Peninsula Streams, Kitty Hawk, and Navy League. Does that add up right? That's five, right?
So, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Just for discussion.
Yep. That leaves Wurundjeri Peninsula Piranha Club, Crisis Intervention, and the Greater Victoria Bike to Work Society in the block.
And the Dry Grad, well, yeah, Dry Grad, you wanted it, yeah. Yes, that's correct. From my perspective.
Counselor O'Keefe?
Actually, no, I had a comment on the Dry Grad similar to the mayor, so I'll just leave that for discussion for later.
Counselor Duncan?
I actually had everything that Counselor Fallon had, except Peninsula Streams, I had their school program actually giving them the full amount. And she didn't mention the core operations, I imagine, because she said not to. My criteria was also not to include operations funding for asks, but rather things that were kind of a discreet annual program. And so I thought for $1,000 to give them a school program funding would be adequate.
So my understanding is that it's, the Peninsula Stream School funding has been removed from that particular motion, we'll come back to it later. So staff, could I just get you to confirm which ones are left in the motion?
We have Piranha Swim Club, the Crisis Intervention, Bike to Work Society, and 1,000 for Dry Grad, is what I have for 2,600.
Dry Grad, yeah, Dry Grad we'll discuss later.
Okay, just those three, then?
Yes, just those three, then. Okay, so we have that motion in front of us. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's carried. Moving on then.
Okay, so do we, should we now go through those ones, or leave them, the ones that have been removed?
My suggestion would be the ones that need discussion, we should discuss later on.
Okay. So then my next list, where I'm looking at denying their requests, would be Peninsula Baseball and Softball Association, the Sydney Museum, Vancouver Island South Film and Media Commission, Percy's Clubhouse, Peninsula Stream Society Core Operations, Farmlands Trust, and Wounded Warriors Canada.
Okay. And Counselor Duncan has already mentioned an interest in the Peninsula Streams Core Operations, so that one shouldn't be on the list and would get discussed later?
My apologies, okay.
Counselor Duncan?
I concur with all of those, except Farmlands Trust, I'd like to remove and discuss later.
Okay. So Farmlands Trust and the Peninsula Streams Core Operations both come out of the list. Go ahead.
I would like to discuss Vancouver Island Film Commission.
Okay, and the Film Commission's out of the list as well? So it's Peninsula Baseball and Softball, Sydney Museum, Percy's Clubhouse, and the Wounded Warriors. And I would still be looking for a second.
I'd like to see all those pulled up.
All of them pulled up.
The four you mentioned, yeah.
Okay. So we don't have a motion to deny anything, we're gonna go through them in detail. Okay? So next up, I guess, is?
Okay, so next up, we've got Sydney Concert Society. Now, because the town pulled out of the CRD Arts, they were relying quite heavily on receiving a grant from the CRD, and that isn't possible for them this year. So last year, they had received 500 for us, from us, and received another 3,500 from the CRD. So I would make the motion that they would get 4,000 from us this year.
That's right.
Okay. This is Sydney Concert Society, which is the under Recreation and Culture, second from the bottom.
Yes.
Yep. Then we've got Cycling.
So hang on. So we've got a motion for Sydney Concert Society for 4,000, and I'm looking for a second, and discussion on this one.
I'll second to discuss.
Okay. So discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah. Last, I saw that the CRD Arts funds that they got last year was actually, was 3,500, so I was gonna be comfortable with 3,500 from us this year, from the Economic Development Fund. Or sorry, no, I don't, no, sorry, I'm mixing that one up. No, just CRD Arts funding, 3,500 from the Grants in Aid.
Just a comment in response to that. They received 3,500 from the CRD, plus they received 500 from us directly. So that's why it's at 4,000.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm not in favor, I am in favor of support to the Sydney Concert Society. However, with 25 applicants, I don't feel that we can allocate nearly a third of the overall budget to one group. I appreciate that with council's decision to withdraw, previous council's decision to withdraw from the Arts, or CRD Arts funding, that does leave a shortfall. But we did increase our funding by $10,000 to, $25,000 to the Peninsula, or Artsy, and they can be an applicant to that society. And my feeling is, is that if we are providing that sort of funding to the Artsy, Artsy, Art Society, that we fund organizations that could apply to that society for a lesser amount, and I was suggesting 500.
Okay. And I've got Counselor Rintul, then Counselor O'Keefe, then Counselor Garnet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I concur, I like, I very much want to see us supporting the Sydney Concert Society. I can tell certainly that they operate, you know, on a very lean basis. The income statement, I know for their 2017-18 fiscal year, you know, showed that they were able to maintain a slight surplus on their year-end position, but very slight. And I take it that's because they operated themselves accordingly. So well done for them for making such a contribution on such a lean budget. I realize that they received money from CRD Arts previously. I don't know that that means that they would have, you know, automatically received that again this year. I think they reapply on an annual basis, and it's evaluated annually. I like the mayor's suggestion around the possibility of some funding through Artsy, and what we've left them there. I had in my mind placed $2,000 on that line from Grants in Aid for Sydney Concert Society. So that's sort of what I'm thinking, which is about half of what Counselor Fallon was.
Counselor O'Keefe?
Yes, I'd like to be able to support them, but I concur with their remarks from the mayor and Counselor Rintul. You know, I had 500, I, you know, maybe 1,000 is what I would be comfortable with.
Okay, I've got Counselor Garnet, and then the mayor.
To be honest, I had down nothing. I could be convinced for the 500. It's difficult when you have this many people applying with this limited amount of money. I tend to lean towards the areas in social services, because I think those people are in more desperate need. So I'm hesitant to grant money to something, as much as I like the arts and culture, I think the value is better served in other areas.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I looked at the three musical-related organizations. So we have the Wurundjeri Peninsula Folk and Fiddle, we have the Wurundjeri Peninsula Pipe Band, and we have the Sydney Concert Society. All of them, if you look at their financials, have, I think, a legitimate need. And, but the Sydney Concert Society, I think, is a large organization, certainly more well-established, and providing many, many concerts throughout the year. And so I looked at those three as a group, and I was thinking of $1,000 to the Sydney Concert Society, and $500 to the Pipe Band, and 500 to the Folk and Fiddle Festival. So that takes me to 1,000 for the Concert Society.
Okay. I guess I'm, I see that we're fairly far apart overall, in terms of, as a group. So this one's gonna be a bit challenging to find the compromise that we eventually wind up on. It may in fact be that this is simply gonna be one of those cases where someone makes a motion, and it carries or doesn't. The only comment I kind of put into the mix is that we have several organizations who've applied for funding, who have routinely been getting it from the town. And the one thing that is difficult, particularly for the smaller organizations, is to suddenly cut them off. So phasing them, you know, giving them notice we're phasing them out and gradually reducing it, is something that I think generally they can survive. Some of them can simply change their schedule where they, you know, don't do one particular event. But some of them really aren't in a position to do that. They don't, they're not used to applying for funding elsewhere, or they simply have not had success elsewhere, and they are fairly dependent on us. So I'd keep that in mind. Whereas organizations that have never gotten funding from us before, you know, they shouldn't really have any expectation of what the outcome's gonna be. Anyway, that's just a comment for thought. Counselor Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So perhaps in the spirit of trying to move this forward, and respect the fact that we're pretty broad from 4,000 to zero dollars, I'll even, you know, bring my own suggestion down slightly, and I will move 1,500 grant and aid to Sydney Concert Society.
But we have a motion on the floor for 4,000 that's being seconded.
Oh, it was seconded. I beg your pardon.
So.
I'll vote against that.
So if I may, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And let somebody else make a second motion.
Is that okay to the second?
Accepted, yeah.
Okay, so that's withdrawn. Now I'm hearing a motion for 1,000?
1,500 to Sydney Concert Society.
Second?
And seconded. Further discussion? Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor? Okay, opposed? That's carried, with one opposed. Okay, on to the next application.
We've got Cycling Without Age Society, and this is new.
We've got a conflict of interest.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, my apologies.
Do you want to just tackle it now?
No, no, we'll skip that, and I'll go down to Wurundjeri Peninsula Folk and Fiddle Society.
Okay.
Now, they're asking for 5,000, and there's a possibility of taking that out of the ED Fund, but I'm loath to do that. I'm willing to give them 1,000.
And I see in the staff report that they've asked for 3,000 as a repayable loan out of that 5,000. So you're making a motion, they get 1?
1,000.
1,000. Do I have a second for discussion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Who'd like to discuss? Counselor Rintul?
I guess if I may, by way of background, in terms of precedent through the staff, is it, previous occasions, have we funded festivals of this nature in kind, or through Grants in Aid?
The only other similar application was the Literary Festival, which started up 2013. In the first year, we gave them a grant, and the second and third instances, it was a repayable loan arrangement, which is what the staff report is essentially recommending for this one.
Thank you. And so I recognize it's not the motion that's on the floor, but we would have, depending on the outcome of this motion, we still have the opportunity to address the request for a payable loan. And those funds come from which source on this temporary basis? How, structurally, how does that work?
In the past, it's been through the Economic Development Fund.
I think it would be reasonable to have some discussion about the merits of providing repayable loans regardless of where they're from, and also some discussion about if a repayable loan was to be given, what's the appropriate source? So I'm sort of opening the floor to anybody talking about any of those things. Go ahead.
I'm not in favor of repayable loans, certainly from the Grant and Aid, because that money will be tied up for a year, and even if it's repaid, it in effect is not granted out to an organization to use, so it actually denies another applicant. In terms of it coming from the ED Fund, or being granted on a loan basis from the ED Fund, where do we stop as a lending organization to events in Sydney? And I'm not in favor of using the ED Fund to finance events.
Counselor O'Keefe?
For similar reasons, I'm also not in favor of using ED Funds. There's not much in there anyways, and so I think we should leave what's there for that. Having said that, I would like to find some way to support some amount for the Folk and Fiddle Festival. Ten concerts, I believe, free concerts, that they're gonna be offering throughout the festival. So I think it's something that will have a positive impact for a lot of different people, the potential to bring in a lot of people from outside of Sydney. So I think it's worthwhile supporting in some way.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my concern is, and much to what you spoke to, Mr. Chair, about groups that we have that rely on funding in past years, and this being a new ask, funding something and then taking potential money away from other groups that rely on the funding from us, that kind of concerns me. So I mean, I walked in again with saying nothing, so I mean, I'd be willing to move that up a little bit probably, but I just see that there's other areas of ask that are more important for our community.
Okay. Go ahead.
I had this one as being, well, I wasn't certain on the amount, but from the Economic Development Fund, I feel if the Literary Festival qualifies, and, you know, that's helped them get off the ground, and that's the big issue, is that they just kind of need, you know, the capital, something to help them get off the ground. And this does seem like it would be a valid boost from the Economic Development Funds, which are limited, but not nearly as limited as 15,000 for Grant and Aid, which, and the purpose of Grant and Aid does seem to be, as Counselor Garnet says, it's more about kind of the social services and helping smaller groups, that I feel that this would be more appropriate, or can be handled, from the ED Fund, and therefore letting some more money go to some of those social services. In addition, I, and I completely agree with the chair that pulling funding back from groups that really required, especially some of these smaller ones, where we're sometimes up to 20% of their revenue, is what they ask from us each year. At the same time, I also don't like the idea of certain groups becoming so dependent on it, that every year is simply the same groups getting the same amount of money, and it's their own personal fund from the town of Sydney, and we're not letting, you know, money be freed up for new groups that might have just as worthy causes or just as high needs. So I feel there's kind of a balance there, and one of the ways we can get around that with this particular one is to use, to look at them as an economic development opportunity, and rather than a social service.
Anyone else? I guess I'll make some comments again. This whole Grant and Aid business is one of the more challenging things for council to deal with, because in the end, they're all worthy causes. I've literally never, in all the years on council, seen any submission that wasn't worthwhile. One of the issues that we have is that we're funding it from taxpayers. And, you know, a lot of these things are quite, have a lot of benefit to the community, not a lot of them. All of them have benefit to the community. Some of them attract donations from people who've got the money to be able to donate to things. When we do it with taxpayer funds, we're essentially requiring that people who are low-income poverty also contribute to these, and they're often in the position of least being able to afford it. And we're often doing it to support social programs that are targeting those people. So this is philosophically a very challenging thing to be doing. Nonetheless, councils in the past have felt that it was appropriate to provide Grant and Aid support to a variety of organizations, and you can see from the history of who got money. And uh you can see from the history of who got money in the past that they haven't targeted a single sector. There've been a lot of um uh organizations that do programs for youth. There are environmental ones, there are arts and culture ones, there's really quite a range. Um, so obviously, this doesn't help uh make the decision. And over the years, the amount of money in grant and aid has gone down. And um to a large extent, it's gone down because some organizations are now getting line items in the budget and don't have to keep asking. They've essentially got a guarantee um that they're getting the funding. And that's things like um Beacon Community Services, Artsy and so on. Uh, so, you know, we're now faced with this challenge of uh we've allocated a certain amount of money. And um there is demands for a lot more than than that. And uh somehow, we're gonna have to uh come to a compromise. And obviously, I'm not saying exactly where I'm gonna land up on things, but. So we do have a motion on the floor. Um, Mary, you were?
I I just go back to a part of a earlier comment that um under Recreation and Culture, we have uh three um arts, uh in this case, musical organizations uh applying. And again, um given the grant funding we give to the Arts Council, if if it's for particular events, um I would sooner see them go through there. We have provided the Sandwich Peninsula Pipe Band with five hundred dollars at least last year, and I believe it was the years previous to that, uh as we have for the Sydney Concert Society. Um, so again, I look at the size of the organizations and and I just try to do it to scale. Uh while the Sydney Concert Society, uh we've approved fifteen hundred. Uh, we haven't discussed the the Peninsula Pipe Band, they're a much smaller organization. But I had them penciled in at five hundred and I had Folk Festival uh penciled in at five hundred as well. We could have a situation, you have three musical organization, arts organizations here, you could have another five, you know, apply next year. And at some point, you have to say, you know, can we fund, you know, how many, how it's with the limited grants and aid uh funding, how many how many arts organizations can we uh can we do? So looking at this year, that's how I arrived at those three particular um arts and in particular music organizations.
So um I'll go back to, we have a motion on the floor and.
Refresh me on the motion, please.
So a thousand dollars.
Yeah. So this is a thousand for Folk and Fiddle out of the grants and aid, not from uh Economic Development Fund. And the motion doesn't say it's a repayable loan. Councillor Fallon?
Uh, just a comment in in regards to these organizations applying to Artsy for grants. I think um that's a valid point and that's something I would like to see happen for the future. But I don't think uh Artsy is funded well enough to be taking on all of this. That that wasn't uh the main focus, although they did talk about doing some grants. That's not all of their funding is, it wasn't set up for that. So uh I would be hesitant at this point to say they should be going there. I'm, I think a thousand dollars for the Folk and Fiddle who is starting up this year. Um, and they are committed to doing a number of free concerts throughout the town. There is a great benefit that comes back to us. Um, I think it's it's a valid number to give them and it just to reiterate, it's, I don't intend this to be a repayable loan. That is a grant and aid for them.
Councillor O'Keefe?
So I will support the motion for a thousand dollars and just getting back to to the additional funds we gave to Artsy. So my recollection of that funds, it was one of those things that they wanted to sup- um to improve their organizational capacity is what I recall. And that included administrative work. So what we funded and the reason I voted against it, because those funds were not earmarked to go to arts organizations like these. It was to hire uh an administrative person to do um communications and websites and that sort of thing. So um it doesn't seem that Artsy has, although we've given them money, they don't, they won't have a lot to hand out. Um, and so that's why I'm okay with giving a thousand dollars for this one because I think as councillor Duncan said, it's good, I think, to to give uh new players um in the community uh an opportunity.
Um, we've gone around a fair amount on this. Shall I call the question? And see where we are on this? All in favor? Four in favor, opposed, and three opposed. Okay, that one carries. Um, onwards.
Onwards. Uh then we have the B C Aviation Museum and um I would say deny.
So that's a motion to deny it. Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Okay, that seconded. Any discussion?
If I may, I think just to speak to it, just I would concur and I don't think the income statement supports uh the request.
And I guess also the note that they're not actually an organization in Sydney. Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous.
And uh then we skip to ORCA, Oral Care for Children and Adolescents. Um, they've asked for three thousand. Last year, they received twenty-five hundred. And I'm struggling a little bit with this one and we've sort of touched on it in our conversations at the table this evening. I look at this as something that um should perhaps be under Beacon Community Services and not be coming to us for grants and aids. Um, because they've received money from us uh last year and the years past, I'm willing to give them money this year, but um I'm also thinking that this needs to be revisited at some point. So I would make a motion of two thousand dollars for this year.
Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Okay, um go ahead. Councillor Garnet?
Yeah, this one for me is um I would actually like to give them the full amount just based on the fact that dental costs go up so drastically every year. This is extremely important. Uh, I know when my kids went to school, um we're fortunate enough to have dental care. It provides dental care for people in the community who can't afford it. Dental care uh provides physical health as well as mental health. Uh, it's extremely important for those disadvantaged. And yes, we can discuss how we're gonna go about doing in the future, but uh that is not now. And I think this is just far too important to not fund for the people in our community who really are in need of it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Um councillor Rintul, councillor O'Keefe, and then the mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And and you know, like the previous initiative, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of good in the town for that. This, there's a lot of good in the community uh for what they're doing. I I'm struggling with it however, because again, the income statement doesn't support the ask. I mean, they're showing twenty eighteen net income of twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars, so I don't. Uh, I mean, that of course is based on the previous revenue that they were donation they would have received from from us last year, uh which was nowhere near that amount. So I'm I'm struggling with with this one based on the income statement they provided us.
Councillor O'Keefe?
So I'm not in favor of the the motion uh for the same reasons that councillor Rintul has mentioned. Also, I although this, as we said before, these are all good causes. I don't know that providing, supporting dental care is something that belongs with local government. That I, I don't know. I str- I struggle with that one. Um, but the bigger thing is that there doesn't appear to be a financial need for this one. And with some of the other things we have here, that there is a demonstrated financial need. So I I don't feel I can support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I I concur with um with councillor Rintul, particularly with regards to the the need and um and the income statement. Um, however, I go back to the remarks in that uh I think with these organizations uh stepping back by uh was it twenty-five hundred dollars last year?
Yes.
Yes, uh twenty-five hundred dollars. I I would be in favor of of stepping them back five hundred and perhaps continuing to do so unless we see otherwise in the future.
Anyone else?
Um, I I guess I agree, agree with everything that was just said on that whole side of the table, um that their income statements don't support it. However, as the mayor pointed out, um well, and and councillor Garnet pointed out, this is a very important um service, very important group, and they have been getting money from us in the past. So continuing to give them something, though not as much as they've asked, and stepping it back, I would be in favor of. So I think the original amount in the motion of two thousand dollars, I would support.
Okay, um I wonder if um a committee would like to uh consider in advising ORCA that um uh council proposes to um reduce their funding over time, like over the next uh three years uh to not to zero. So that they are aware it's coming, um that uh, you know, essentially, we've we've uh we see them as an organization that's quite valuable, but um they don't appear to have the same level of financial need as some of the other applicants. And uh we don't wanna cut them off suddenly, but uh we think that that's the appropriate action.
I would move that as an amendment to the motion.
Second. Okay, it sounds like that was a friendly amendment. Councillor O'Keefe?
Yeah, I I guess I I I still won't su- uh won't support it. Um, you know, despite the fact that, yeah, it's it it's a, it's a good thing, it's important for kids to have have uh dental care. Um, but, you know, they're the fact that we're not going to, if we don't give them this money, it's it's not going to affect, it doesn't appear that it's going to affect them. So they had a healthy amount of net income, so I guess I'm not in favor of fun- funding something where there is not a demonstrated financial need. Whether it's a good thing or not, I don't dispute that. I just, I would rather see the money go to an organization that is um has is fu- uh struggling financially. So I'm still not in favor of it.
Councillor Fallon?
Thank you. I just, um as I came out of the gate, I I struggle with this because I don't think it sits under our umbrella. But it has been historically, uh we have supported it. And I'm not comfortable in pulling the funding directly at this point. Um, but I do appreciate the comments that have been made at the table.
Uh councillor Garnet?
Yeah, I totally um appreciate what you guys have had to say about their budget, but I also understand that having a twenty-eight thousand dollar balance in a service that costs so much money to provide really isn't that much of a budget, uh a lot of money in your budget, um in terms of having that at net balance. And yes, you can say, well, there's other people that have more needs. It's, you know, it's dental dental care is very, very expensive. So who's to say that if you start, if you stop pulling it, that that all of a sudden, they don't have those balances anymore? And the next thing you know, it's not here anymore. And we have people in our community that fall through the cracks and aren't getting that care, which is critically important, especially at uh as youth and adolescents. So I I unless we can come up with a better model, and I understand and appreciate what you're saying, that maybe it shouldn't be under our umbrella, but for whatever reason, it is in front of us. So I I can't vote in favor of something that that's gonna take away something of such importance to people who are in need. And that's gonna be my vision on a lot of things. And that's just the way I see that this is a need, that it's something for people who are in many cases desperate. So I I have to support funding it. Thank you.
Councillor Rintul?
Yeah, thank you. And there's certainly compelling comments there and and I I don't know how much money they have in the bank. This is just an income statement that shows uh, you know, net income of twenty-six thousand and change. Uh, they have identified this year as some of a capital program with, you know, some specific improvements and and they're indicating the cost of those will be twenty-five thousand dollars. So I I do recognize they're investing in this for the future. And um, you know, I'm I'm, I had penciled in fifteen hundred dollars for this. I wasn't prepared to see it go away, but I'll certainly be flexible. I think the motion is for two thousand, so I think I'm there now.
Okay, um I think we've had a pretty good discussion and it's time to test the waters with the, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Got one opposed. Okay, um so that one is carried. Uh onwards?
Uh, now we come to, in my list here, the Sydney Marine Rescue Society. They've asked for fif- five thousand dollars. Uh, they're looking for uh first responder training uh for the marine um responders. And I'm prepared to um, no, last year, they received fifteen hundred from uh from them. And I'm prepared to go fifteen hundred this year.
I'll second that.
So that's moved and seconded, and now on to discussion. Go ahead.
Uh, I was prepared, they have uh two, two items that they've divided up their ask into two thousand dollars for equipment and three thousand dollars for the training. I was prepared to go two thousand, but um in in light of some of the other changes that have been made, I'm to uh to some of, to some of the distribution of funds, I'd I'd be okay with fifteen hundred. I'll support that.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, looking to their financials, uh they are basically operating break even. And so I would support this uh continued uh, our continued support.
Okay, anyone else? Councillor O'Keefe?
Um, yeah, I would support the motion for fifteen hundred. I think it's an an important service to the community. Uh, there seems to be a financial need, so I would support that motion.
So I guess this is where I throw in my two cents. So um this one's actually a life-saving thing. It's not um I mean, it's not simply healthcare. This is first responder um on the water, not just for Sydney, obviously. But uh if they don't have the equipment, they don't have the training, they can't do it. So fifteen hundred, uh and as has been commented, their uh finances are pretty lean. This seems to be something where, well, from my point of view, I'm willing to see us do more than we gave them last year to help them get this in in place. I don't see how we can find the full five thousand that they're asking for. But um I would be willing to see more than we gave them last year. Go ahead.
Yeah, I came in with full agreement on the fifteen hundred, but uh you make a compelling argument. I I'd be willing to to uh pump it up as well. And what, did you have a number that you were thinking in mind?
I guess um two thousand would give them the uh the training they're asking for, although that's a pretty small increment. Um, I think I'd be more inclined to something like twenty-five hundred. Councillor O'Keefe?
So I I could be convinced to to up up that. However, what I'm concerned about is we still have a number of things to go through. So what I would be willing to do is go ahead and pass the fifteen hundred and put a little asterisk beside this one to see if uh what's left in the pot to at the end, if we could. That would be something that I would uh, we'd be willing to come back and add on to if we can do that.
That um works, so we have a motion on the floor currently for fifteen hundred. Call the question. Call the question. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, on to the next.
Okay, so um we've got a couple now that um the mayor can't. So I guess what we should do is go back to on my list, uh the ones looking for discussion. And then we've got Peninsula Figure Skating Club. They uh ask five hundred, they received five hundred last year, and I was suggesting five hundred for this year.
So you're moving five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay, so um I can't recall who wanted it out of the list. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it it's um, it's difficult because you're dealing with a finite amount of money and trying to and place who gets it, who doesn't. And then we, you know, we're on, we're saying five hundred dollars for figure skating, but we're saying no to Peninsula Baseball earlier on for nothing. So I mean, I might be willing to change my mind and and do a compromise if the uh person who moved that the Peninsula Baseball gets nothing. Might be getting a bit of the piece of, but I just think that we should offset, if we're gonna support one of the amateur sports, then maybe the other, especially, I know that baseball hasn't come in the previous year asking for funding it, but um. year asking for funding, but it's, it's a pretty worthwhile endeavor at that park, it's full every weekend, they host championships, which also contributes to our economy, so I think anything we can do to help that park is important, you can get a few, we've had, we've had multiple provincials, I think, in that park over the time, I've lived there, and you have so many people in, that come into town, you know, that contribute probably thousands of dollars to our economy, so I think to, to not give them back when they're asking for a need, I think, I think we, we need to help to support them to some degree.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, we have three sports organizations, Peninsula Baseball and Softball, the Piranhas, which we've have approved, and the skating club, and all of them, I mean, the Peninsula Baseball, their financials are, are, are good, they're not swimming, and, but they're, they're doing okay, so, and that's a new request, so we had provided it to the skating club and the swim club in the past, so I would be in favor of repeating their 500, and giving a new 500 to Peninsula Baseball.
Second? Okay, so the motion is 500 to the figure skating and 500 to Peninsula Baseball, okay, and it's seconded, go ahead.
I was in favor of the 500 for the figure skating club, looking at their financials, they're, they're super tight, and they have been getting this 500 for four years from us, and I think that they've kind of incorporated in, into their, their needs, they need this, whereas the baseball, I mean, they have very robust cash flow, and this, and they've never asked before, and it wasn't really clear to me why they needed this 1,500, it was just kind of a, ah, for, you know, the stuff that they, they need all the time, and it just kind of felt like they were maybe exploring other options for funding, and, and kind of like a, ah, might as well try it, rather than a, we really need this specific money from a new funder because we have trouble getting funding, and I feel like if we don't give them this, they're absolutely fine, whereas the figure skating and, and some of these other organizations that we haven't discussed yet, will not be absolutely fine if they don't get the money.
Mr. Hissey?
Just to clarify, they did receive funding of 500 annually from 2014 through 2016, but also the town provides a significant amount of monetary support in our annual maintenance budget for that park every year as well.
Thank you, councillor Rento?
Yeah, thank you, and, and I, I concur completely with, there's even some economic spinoff from, from this, certainly, but I wanted to raise the point that the town has traditionally supported Peninsula Baseball and Softball Association through that maintenance contract and doing the work in the fields, which these other endeavors do not receive a benefit of that nature, so I hadn't intended to support the, the grant and aid request for PBSa, I had intended to do so for, for figure skating, so the, the motion is, is on the floor, I would vote against, and then I would move funding to figure skating.
What I would propose to do is split that motion into two halves, so we'll consider those two separately, and we'll start off with the figure skating for 500, okay, any further discussion on this one?
So we're vote, so the motion is 500 for figure skating?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm dealing with it in Sarriadam, in two halves, okay, I'll call the question on the 500 for the figure skating, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's carried unanimously, and now on to the motion for 500 for the baseball and softball, any discussion, councillor O'Keefe?
Yeah, no, I'm reflecting on councillor Rento's comments about the significant support that we already give the baseball association through maintenance, I think, do we cover their water bill as well for, or is that through North Sandwich?
Mr. Hissey?
Their water bill is covered up to a point, and if they exceed that level, then they pay, but the point is, I believe, $6,000 a year now.
Okay, so, so I'm, I guess I'm satisfied that the town is supporting baseball significantly more than these other organizations, so I'm, I'm happy with not providing an additional 500 for them.
Okay, any, yes, councillor Garnet?
I'm assuming that the figure skating club doesn't have to zamboni their own ice or maintain the facility, I'm assuming that comes from Panerarak, which we pay taxes into, no, so they have to zamboni their own ice by themselves, or, I mean, there's, I mean, they're not, their costs aren't, they, you know, you know where I'm going with this, right, Mr. Hissey?
Well, according to their financials anyways, they pay, they pay a significant amount for ice time.
Rental.
So they're, they're paying for that, is my understanding.
Yeah, same as hockey, they pay the recreation commission.
Okay.
Go ahead, no, okay, I'll call the question, all in favor of 500 for baseball? Opposed? Okay, that one's defeated, okay, on to the next one.
Then we've got the Vancouver Island South Film and Media Commission, we give them 500 as a line item in the budget, and they're asking 5,000 this year, I originally came out of the gate and was looking at denying their ask completely, but I also reflect back on some of the comments I heard during their presentation some time ago, and look at the impact to our community economic driver, and I'm willing to consider giving them something, I would, I would be, I would be willing to put in another 500.
Okay, do I have a second here?
A second.
Okay, and discussion, go ahead.
I'm in favor of, of increasing it incrementally by 500, I think they do bring economic benefit, but I would, I would move an amendment to, to have it come from the Economic Development Fund.
So it would remain 500 as a line item in the budget, and you're, we've got a motion for 500, and now you're moving an amendment to that, that, that 500 come from the Economic Development Fund, and I need a second here for the motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, that's second, so we're starting off by discussing whether the fund should come from the Economic Development Fund, as opposed to from grant and aid.
I had written down exactly what the mayor had, so I will be supporting that one.
Okay, anyone else want to weigh in on this? Councillor O'Keefe?
I'm not thrilled to be taking things from the Economic Development Fund, because there's not much there, but 500 isn't a huge amount, and I think the Film Commission is, does provide a good, a fair amount of economic development to the community, so I would be willing to support that.
Councillor Fallon?
The, the, I won't support it coming out of the Economic Development Fund, because I look at it as, we're also looking at the, the Arts and Culture, like Sydney Concert and the Pipe Band, they're not coming out of the economic development, and they're also driving the economy, perhaps not as vigorously as the South Island Film and Media, but I'm, I'm happy with it coming out of grants and aids.
Okay, I guess my comment on the thing, I recognize we do get value out of, out of the activities of the Film Commission, certainly every time something is on location in Sydney, we get the exposure of whatever the thing is, and there's quite a bit of economic spinoff having the film crew locally, on the other hand, an increase of 500 to the Film Commission's budget overall is not substantial, it, I recognize there's, there's a gesture there that we're indicating that, that we recognize, you know, greater value than, than we're currently funding, but I also have some problem with taking it from the Economic Development Fund, so I don't want to see it come out of grant and aid, I would rather simply not give them the extra funding than either of those two choices, so that's where I'm going to wind up, anyone, anyone further, shall I just call the question, okay, on the motion, on the amendment to have the funds come from the Economic Development Fund, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's carried, and now on the main motion as amended, to give them an additional 500 out of the Economic Development Fund, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried, okay, on to the next one.
Okay, so then we have Percy's Clubhouse Society, I don't see that as something the town should be supporting, they're asking for 16,000, I'm prepared to deny their request.
Second. So that's moved and seconded, any discussion? Go ahead.
I concur, it was a huge ask, and, and looking at what they requested, while Percy's is really important for the elementary school age children, and I know it feels like almost everybody has their kids go there in my kind of age cohort of, of children, but what they're asking for was something which will not actually affect whether they're able to keep providing the service that they do of the childcare, this was a, a bus to take kids on school trips, that was kind of a nice to have, because they are already able to access a bus, and this was funding to help them purchase a bus so that they wouldn't have to rent a bus, and that over time, eventually, perhaps, this would help save them some money, so I don't feel like by denying any part of this request, we're going to be taking something away, they'll be able to continue doing fundraising for that, and they've been diligently doing so, and they just won't get the bus as quickly as they wanted, but I'm fairly sure they'll still get a bus eventually.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that the request, as indicated, for 16 was to aid in purchasing the bus, and the bus was going to cost 46,000, however, if you set the bus aside, if you look at their basic operational budget, they were, had a deficit of almost $3,000 on a, on total of $18,000, so they're, they're operating on the margin, as they stated in their description, they provide high-quality, developmentally-appropriate childcare for children aged five to 12, and operate out of the, operate out of Sydney Elementary, I believe, so I would be supporting, I would support a request for 500.
Okay, I currently have a motion to deny the 16,000.
Sorry, I won't be in favor of the motion.
Okay, and councillor O'Keefe?
So I'm in favor of the motion for reasons, you know, explained so far, and again, I, you know, childcare is important, but I don't know if that's something that local governments should be supporting overall, there's lots of different daycare centers in, in, in the, in the area, and as councillor Duncan mentioned, this is to help purchase a bus, it's not going to jeopardize necessarily daycare availability for kids in the area, so I'm supportive of letting this one go.
Okay, further discussion? Go ahead.
Through the chair to staff, the, the request, the 16,000, is that simply for the bus, there's, there's no other use for those for any kind of increase in funding?
That's what was indicated in the application, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I don't support the 16,000 for the bus, but I also concur with the mayor about the, the need to help them if they're running a bit of a shortfall, because I, I don't think there are a ton of daycare spaces in Sydney, I think, I think there's, there's always a need for those, and if they need, but if that's the way they've asked, I'm not sure how we approach that, like, can we put a motion that we would fund them that's not pertaining to the bus, is that allowed or not?
So we can, in fact, approach it by dealing with the motion for the 16,000 requested, if that's denied, it's denied, if somebody then wants to make a motion that we give them a grant of a certain amount of money for whatever, committee can do that, so at the moment, we have a motion in front of us, or on the table, to deny the request for 16,000, and I'm actually seeing, I think, a consensus on that, so I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried, does anyone want to make a subsequent motion?
We'd make a motion to, for 500 for general operations.
Okay, let's move.
Second.
Seconded, discussion, councillor O'Keefe?
I'm, I'm opposed to the motion, there's programs that the provincial government has announced recently that daycare centers can apply to for funds, and so I, I just think it's beyond the realm of local government to, to wade into that.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe the provincial government program, which we agreed to join with other, other municipalities, was for a feasibility study to ascertain the need for daycare spaces throughout several municipalities, not, not to actually go to board programs.
Councillor O'Keefe?
The program that I'm speak, I, I, I'm aware of that one, but there's other programs recently announced that sort of over and above that.
Councillor Rento?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I concur that there's a, there appears to be a slight operating deficit, but that, under current assets, it looks to me like they've got money in the bank, this is year end 2018 that we're looking at here, I, I guess, and more to the point, you know, despite that comment, it's not what they applied for, and, and I think if they felt operationally they had a need, we would have seen an application for operational support, so I, I'm not going to support the, the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that one fails, let's move on.
Now we go to Peninsula Stream Society for core operations, they're asking for 5,000, and I would look at denying that request.
Can I ask, does anyone want to make a motion of a, a positive nature that they be granted a certain amount of money? Councillor Rento?
Yes, I did want to make a motion of that nature, would you prefer me to make it, or are you looking for a second or to the?
I, I think it's probably more efficient for us to discuss it like that than having a motion to deny, so if you would.
Okay, thank you, I was prepared to move that Peninsula Stream Society receive 1,000 for cooperation from grants, second?
Okay, so that's moved and seconded, discussion, go ahead.
If I may interject through the chair to staff, can you tell us how much we've allocated to present out of the 15,000, please?
You have 6,900 left before this motion.
Thank you. Speaking to the, speaking to the request, I, I think Peninsula Streams is doing excellent work, well, throughout the region, beyond the peninsula, actually, and, and some of that happens in Sydney, other municipalities are funding them to, to a much, much higher level, and I believe we should, we should start with, with support at that level.
Councillor Rento?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I'm, I'm just really pleased at the prospect of working with Peninsula Streams, we've got a major project ahead of us around Ray Creek, certainly their expertise and involvement could well be envisioned, and, you know, I like the idea of seeing the town supporting Peninsula Streams in terms of their endeavors, so, thank you.
Councillor O'Keefe?
I'm also in support of the motion, I think, as I mentioned, Peninsula Streams does a lot of good work throughout the community, so I, I think this is a, a good investment for us, I'm also hope, I, I noticed that they've also asked for money for school programs, but we'll discuss that separately, I presume so, I'll, I'll support the current motion.
Anyone further? I'll express what my concerns are, I know they do quite a bit of work in the area, and the one thing that I've always found troubling is is that, uh, the town generally doesn't have an awareness, like, we're not getting any reporting, uh, in terms of what they're doing. So, for example, um, I understand that they had a volunteer crew doing, um, uh, picking up garbage, uh, um, throughout Ray Creek, um, our Ray Creek Park. And that's really very commendable and all that, but I don't think our staff had a, any idea it was underway. And typically with things like that, if, um, if we get a phone call from a neighbor of, uh, what is your crew doing out there, whatever, and our staff knows absolutely nothing about it, it usually doesn't go all that well. So I've been a lot more comfortable with the idea of funding them for specific things than this, uh, uh, core operations, um, and, uh, continuing this, um, the challenges with communications on what they're doing. So I, if the funding is gonna be, um, uh, approved, um, and I'm sure that, uh, they're doing worthwhile things, I would like to see us, uh, improve those communications so that we actually know what they're doing in Sydney. Okay, councillor Fallon?
And just further to that, Mr. Chair, we recently had, um, oh, Lord, I've forgotten the name, uh, the organization that's, uh, cleaning up the brush at, um,
Green Team.
Green Team, thank you. Uh, Green Team come here, and one of the comments was that, or several of the comments at the table were, we were looking, wishing that, uh, a local organization would take the lead in that, and if this is something, I don't know if this comes within the purview of Peninsula Streams, but I would think it does, and, um, so I think maybe there needs to be a little bit, uh, better communication from the organization to, to what benefit they are bringing, um, and what, what else they could be doing for us, so. Um, I think right now core operations is not supportable in my estimation.
So, um, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I, I'd originally, I said not to support core operations, just to be able to more fully support the school programs that we'll, we'll talk about afterwards, um, but bringing up your point, councillor Wainwright, about, about, uh, you know, the trash cleanups and, and the town not knowing, I'm wondering if, and we have such enthusiasm to work with Peninsula Streams, if a better avenue for the town's support might be to explore avenues for more in-kind um, support and collaboration that might be able to be offered from the town. I don't know if staff feels comfortable commenting on that at this point or not.
If I could make a comment, uh, we have two representatives from Peninsula Streams, and I was seeing, um, uh, some positive response to the idea of better communication of what they're doing. So, uh, I think that, um, uh, I'm interpreting that as if we approve the funding, they will uh, improve the communications, and maybe when next year rolls around, if that hasn't happened, um, coun- the committee may feel that it's not appropriate to continue the funding. And I'm sure they heard that message, so. Uh, shall we call the question? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Next?
Okay, Farmlands Trust, um, I'm really not sure where to go with this one. I, it's, um, so I, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna sit back from, if somebody else
And let someone else move.
to speak to that one.
Councillor O'Keefe, do you have a motion?
No, a question, a question. Um, did we s- did we skip over the school programs?
We're coming back to that.
Okay.
Uh, councillor Rento?
I'll move that Farmlands Trust be, uh, denied grant and aid funding.
Okay, um, do I have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay, um, yes, councillor Duncan?
Uh, I was going to support Farmlands Trust getting some funding. I actually had seven hundred and fifty dollars down. I know that the organization is outside of Sydney, and they can't really quantify how many people from Sydney are involved, but I know that what they're doing is important for food security, and we're one of the municipal, municipalities that doesn't really address food security actions. It's big part of the CRD's climate action planning is looking at food security, um, in the local region, and even though we're surrounded by North Sandwich and Central Sandwich, some really big farmlands, we don't really take any initiative, and I thought this might be a way to start getting in, involved with that. Um, and the other thing about the Farmlands Trust is the Newman Farm, um, I did a volunteer cleanup there a few years ago, and I know the, the food was going, all goes, was at that time anyway, was all going to our place. So this, uh, we, we have line items going to soup kitchens in, in our region, and I thought, you know, uh, some of that food, the fresh food, probably also goes to our local, um, food bank as well, and so being able to keep that Newman Farm expanding and operational, it might be really critical to some of the food security that we're, initiatives we're already supporting. That's my rationale.
So, um, I may be incorrect in this, but I'm seeing that we've still got, um, at least five more submissions that we have historically given money to that, uh, we haven't discussed yet, and I believe we've only got fifty-nine hundred remaining at this point. So, uh, that is certainly influencing my thinking in terms of the willingness to give any funding to an organization outside of Sydney. Others? Go ahead.
Um, I agree with, uh, the things that, uh, the councillor, uh, Duncan said, and I will be opposed to the motion denying.
Okay. So, um, I guess it's time to test the waters on the motion. So we've got the motion on the floor to deny. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's carried. Okay.
Um, then I was looking at Wounded Warriors, and, uh, we did give them a thousand dollars last year, and they're asking for the same again this year, but uh, I think it's one that falls outside of our district. It has nothing to do with the merits of the organization. I happen to know some of the people who are involved in it, and, and I think it's a, it's a great organization, but I don't think it's something that, uh, we should be supporting.
So that's a motion to deny?
Correct.
Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Go ahead.
This is the same organization, if I'm not wrong about the, we wrote a letter of support for a week ago? Or moved supportive of a letter to, for the, for the Wounded Warrior Victus Games, which is Wounded Warriors attached. I'm assuming we have some Wounded Warriors living in our community. So for that reason alone, I would support funding them.
Okay, anyone else? Councillor Rento?
Yeah, likewise, uh, and we've supported them, uh, last year, the tune of a thousand dollars, uh, you know, I may have an appetite to see that slightly reduced if we wanted to have that discussion, but, uh, I'm not in favor of withdrawing support completely.
Okay.
I s- I agree with the former two speakers. Unfortunately, I don't have more financial information, but I would, I would be supportive of, uh, a level of funding.
Councillor Duncan?
So when I was going through these, I was also looking at kind of the catchment that they had for raising funds. Um, and we just denied the Farmlands Trust because they're not in Sydney. But we're gonna grant money to the Wounded Warriors Canada. They can raise mons, funds across Canada, and I know that they send a lot of people to these runs. Like, I have an old school chum who goes to Europe every year to compete in Wounded Warriors runs. They have a lot of ability to pull donations from other groups, and we have fifty-nine hundred dollars left for a small pool of people who can't pool funds from across Canada. So I really could not justify giving money to this group when we're going to deny it to other groups that actually serve our people who can't ask other people for money.
Mr. Hissick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it makes any difference to deliberations, I looked up their twenty nineteen, um, campaign, and they've exceeded their goal of a hundred thousand. They raised a hundred and thirteen during their run in early March.
Thank you. So, um, we've got the motion on the floor to deny the funding. Uh, any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor of denying it? Okay, opposed? Okay, that's carried. Um, moving on then.
Okay, so, um,
Gonna suggest that we need to deal with Peninsula Streams schools programs?
Yes. Okay, so they were asking for five thousand.
Uh, that's core, one thousand.
Where am I? I'm wrong. Sorry. I don't even see them on that list, okay. So, are they under, uh, oh, here we are. Okay, the, the, sorry, Peninsula Streams School Program, um, they're asking for a thousand. We gave them five hundred last year, and I'm comfortable with repeating that. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
That's moved and seconded, discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, um.
Okay, so on my original list, we had pulled, uh, several outs, oh, my Peninsula Streams. So we've got, um, six, seven, six Kitty Hawk and Navy League of Canada.
And Peninsula Dry Grad as well.
And Peninsula Dry Grad, um.
One at a time?
So let's do one at a time. We've got six, seven, six Kitty Hawk, uh, seven fifty from last year, and I would move that we would give them seven fifty again this year.
Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Uh, uh, given that we're running low on resources and we still have places to go here, I, I would be comfortable with, um, uh, Kitty Hawk and Navy League, uh, five hundred for each. And then saving that five hundred towards something else.
Okay, so, um, we have a motion for, uh, seven hundred and fifty and a suggestion that that be reduced to five hundred. Any further discussion? Councillor O'Keefe?
I'd be more inclined to, uh, support five hundred apiece. It's more in line with the, some of the other uh, amounts we've given to other community organizations like the skating club and the, the swimming club, and, um, yeah, I'd like the opportunity to, to be able to, uh, put that to maybe so- something else that's later on the list.
Mr. Chair, I'll pull that, uh, seven fifty. Motion.
Okay, if that's acceptable to the seconder? To withdraw the motion? No, okay. Um, so we've still got the motion for seven fifty on, on the floor, and procedurally, the way it works is once something's moved and seconded, the motion belongs to the committee, not the mover, so. Okay, um, discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, again, their financials, uh, they're fairly balanced, and, um, they do have eighty-two cadets and, uh, uh, near, or forty, forty of the families living, uh, members of, are living in families in Sydney. Um, and they're one of the few applicants, and they might be the only applicant that actually indicates how many members living in Sydney, even though it's a question asked on, on the application form that, uh, that answered the question.
Um, I'll just throw in that, uh, uh, they've always had a struggle coming up with other funding. Uh, they're very active in the community. Um, you know, clearly we have, uh, Sydney families participating in the program. Uh, it's something I'm comfortable support. They've asked for more than we've given them, um, that's typical. Uh, I'm not comfortable reducing the funding to them. Anyone further? So the motion on the floor is to grant them seven hundred and fifty. Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Uh, next?
We have the Navy League of Canada, and again, I will make the motion of seven fifty for their fund.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Go ahead.
Uh, I'm sorry, I was trying to jump in in front of, uh, councillor Fallon there. Uh, I've noticed we're getting to the bottom, and we still have, we have the organizations that the mayor and I were intending to recuse ourselves from, and we're getting pretty close to the point where we're gonna know how much money is left in the pot. And so I was kind of gonna try to say, we should probably jump out and let everyone else deal with those organizations and figure out what that, no, because otherwise we get left to the bottom, and the point of recusing ourselves is to be in, able to ensure that we're not helping to sway how much money gets granted to these organizations. And the longer we stay and are able to vote on organizations and how much they're getting, the more we're actually influencing how much money is left, is what I'm starting to worry about, that we haven't actually removed ourselves from the conflict.
I have to say, as chair, it shouldn't really make a lot of difference what order we do it in, and I appreciate the point that's being raised, so, um, if committee is okay with it, I'd suggest that we in fact do, uh, start dealing with some of the ones where there's conflict of interest.
If I could, uh, through the chair to, uh, to Mr. Hissick again, ask for where we are in. Before this seven fifty, where, that is a motion on the table?
Four thousand, six hundred and fifty remaining.
Thank you.
Um, councillor O'Keefe?
And if we can just reiterate what's, what's left to look at.
Cycling Without Age?
Cycling Without Age, and that's
Peninsula Literary Festival.
Literary.
Um, Navy League of Canada, Peninsula Dry Grad, uh, Guidance Scout Hall.
Sydney Preschool Cooperative.
Uh, thank you, and Sydney Preschool Cooperative. Uh, sorry, we did, we didn't Mr. Hissick?
We didn't send And two more.
Yeah, two more, okay.
Museum and the Pipe Band.
Museum and the Pipe Band. Thank you very much. Okay, so, um,
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to recuse myself at this time for the, um, Sydney and Peninsula Literary Festival.
Just before you do that, um, we do have a motion on the floor. Are we okay with that being withdrawn? The mover and the seconder? The, that's the motion for the Navy League of Canada.
Sure.
Okay, we'll come back to it. Okay, so, um, the mayor's going to, uh, recuse himself, and I guess we're gonna deal with the, um, uh, Peninsula Literary Festival. Okay, so, um, that's on the floor, uh, and would uh, they've made a request for fifteen hundred, uh, they didn't get any money last year. Uh, in the past, they've gotten a loan from the Economic Development Fund every two years. Would someone like to make a motion?
Um, I, I move that the fifteen hundred comes from a, a loan from the Economic Development Fund, uh, just based on the fact that, uh, they may be expecting that as well, if that's what historically has been happening.
Do I have a seconder? Hmm, I'm not seeing a seconder for that. Okay, do I have a different motion?
I'll make a motion of five hundred dollars from the grants and aid fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's moved and seconded, um, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Done. So, yeah, if you'd bring him back, please? Okay, and
So then I'll recuse myself so that you can, I, I suppose, discuss all three of the Cycling Without Age Society, Sydney Preschool Cooperative, and Sydney Guidance Scout Hall?
That would make sense. Thank you. Okay, um, for information, uh, the Literary Festival was granted five hundred from the grant and aid. And now we're gonna move on to the three where councillor Duncan has a conflict of interest. Can I suggest we start with the Guidance Scout Hall Society?
I'll make a motion of five hundred dollars.
Okay, um,
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Um, next one up, let's, uh, talk about the, um, uh, I think it's the Sydney Preschool Cooperative?
I'll move that Sydney Preschool Cooperative, uh, be struck from the, uh, grant and aid applications.
Second.
The motion is to deny.
Correct.
Okay. And that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I mean, I recognize the Sydney Preschool Cooperative, uh, you know, does good, uh, work in the community, parents very involved, um, but that's, you know, what a cooperative is, and, uh, certainly my kids went to that preschool, uh, you know, I, I, my, my heart is there in that sense, uh, but I don't support the town.
my, my heart is there in that sense, uh, but I don't support the town purchasing the, the shelving units as is requested here.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? Posed? Okay, that one's denied, and now we're on to Cycling Without Age Society. They're a new society, no previous requests, they're asking for two thousand dollars.
I'd make a motion to support them, uh, to start at one thousand dollars?
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded, discussion? Uh, go ahead.
Uh, a new organization, a lot of enthusiasm, expensive bicycles, but providing a valuable service in particular to the demographic in our community. Um, and, um, I think it's exciting that they're up and running, and they do have a demonstrated financial need.
Okay, um, yes, Counselor Garnet?
Uh, I concur with the mayor, um, watched the fifteen minute video, um, yeah, quite moving, um, I love that expression, feeling the wind through your hair. Uh, that, having had senior, uh, parents and, uh, in-laws who were not able to move, um, they would have enjoyed this immensely, so I, I wish you nothing but the best of luck and hope it succeeds. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor O'Keefe?
Yeah, uh, I s- I support the motion, I think it's a great initiative, uh, dealing with, uh, a lot of people in our community, not just seniors, but those who have, um, you know, mobility issues as well. A way to get them out and about and feel more connected to our community, so I'm happy to, uh, support the motion.
Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor? Posed, that's carried, and if we could bring Counselor Duncan back? Okay, so, um- Yes, um, just for information, uh, cycling without age was granted a thousand. Um, Sydney Preschool, the application was denied, and Sydney Guidance Scout Hall was granted five hundred. And Mister Hissick, could you tell us what the, um, balance remaining is?
Two thousand six hundred and fifty.
Twenty-six fifty, okay. Uh, and now I guess back to Navy League of Canada.
Uh, make a motion to give them seven hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Posed, that's carried. Okay, uh, and now Peninsula Dry, uh, Grad?
Make a motion to give them a thousand dollars.
Okay, that's moved, and do I have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded, um, discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Posed, that's carried. Um, we've got nine hundred left, I believe. And we still have, uh-
Did we do the pipe band?
I was gonna say, the pipe band is, um, on the list, uh, they got five hundred last year, they're asking for a thousand.
I move that we give five hundred?
Second, so that's moved five hundred and seconded, any discussion? Go ahead.
Not so much the pipe band, but I'm, we were, we were saying that if we had any money left over, we were gonna think about that, or are we gonna go back to that after?
If we have money left over-
Then we're, okay, great.
Okay. Okay, um, any further discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? Posed, okay, that one's carried. Uh, we still have the Sydney Museum, they're requesting five hundred dollars for their, um, Chief Dan George exhibit. Do I have a motion?
Uh, I'll move that we grant the five hundred dollars to the Economic Development Fund.
So, you're moving that we grant five hundred from the Economic Development Fund, do I have a seconder? Hmm, I'm not seeing it-
Second.
Okay, there's a seconder. Discussion? Counselor O'Keefe?
So, I'm, I'm not in favor of, uh, granting any funds to the museum. They're already, they get a significant chunk of money from, uh, us already. Um, this is a project that the museum knew about two years ago, and they've had lots of time to fundraise, so I, I think there's, uh, uh, other things that we could spend that on.
Counselor Garnet?
Your points are valid, I, I just feel it's gonna be a, a, an economic driver for the community, it's held on a, um, National First, uh, First Nations Day. Um, I think that's also important in terms of, uh, in incorporating that as we move down the reconciliation trail, um, want this to be successful as possible, and I think anything the town of Sydney can do to, to aid and make that better, it's a very expensive endeavor to have the opening, uh, uh, but it, it's gonna have a lot of benefits for the community outside of economics as well, um, just from the optic side of it, and, um, I'm, I'm, for one, I'm excited about it, and, uh, excited to see how it unfolds, so I would be in support of it.
Counselor O'Keefe?
So, I, I, I agree that it's a great, great exhibit, and it's, it's a good thing for the museum to be doing. Um, however, in terms of financial need, I don't believe that they've demonstrated that there's financial need. So, I, I was familiar with the budget that they, they drafted, uh, some, some time ago. The other thing I guess I would point out in regards to the museum is, they've noted that since they've started doing electronic donations, that their donations for the first few months of the year are in excess of what they've, uh, normally had, so I'm not feeling that there's a financial need, I support that it's a good idea, but I think there's other organizations that, um, are more, uh, needy in terms of, of the money, that's all.
I'm gonna concur with Counselor O'Keefe, my understanding is that they're having, uh, what looks to be their best year ever for, uh, donations at the door. And clearly, they're up at least five hundred dollars over where they expected to be. And with respect to it being National Indigenous Day and reconciliation, I'm not sure that, uh, an exhibit celebrating somebody from outside the traditional territory of the local First Nations is gonna do very much for a reconciliation. Yep.
It, the, it's not just gonna be, there are exhibits from, uh, First Nations people, uh, around this area as well would be part of it, so it's not just strictly Dan, Chief Dan George's exhibit. And there will be, uh, representatives from the First Nations in our community that will be there for the opening ceremonies. Just to clarify.
Thank you, that does make a difference, but, uh, I'll still say that they appear to be doing very well this year, and don't appear to need the money. Um, any further discussion? So, we've got a, a motion to, uh, give them five hundred?
Correct.
From the Economic Development Fund?
From the, yeah.
So, um, I'll call the question, all in favor? Posed? Okay, that's defeated. Um, so, uh, can I have a motion, uh, to deal with the application? Uh, are we denying it? Cause apparently, we're not funding it from Economic Development.
Yeah, motion to deny.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded, and call the question, all in favor? Posed? Okay, that's carried, one opposed? Okay, um. So, it leaves us four fifty? Yes, I, I believe we have four hundred left, and I think, I'll ask Mister Hissick, um, do we have any left? That we haven't considered?
No, there aren't any left, but I, uh, I would like the committee to consider what you'd like to do with the fifteen hundred in church grants, whether you'd like to continue that as line items? And if so, whether you want it brought back for review at a certain time.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I guess I'll ask the committee, we have four hundred left in the grants and aid currently. Uh, there's been a suggestion that we would revisit the San Ex Marine Rescue Society if there was money left over. Um, we could also leave four hundred in grants and aid in case something comes up later in the year. Uh, I guess we're looking for some direction on that. And perhaps if that fifteen hundred Mister Hissick just referred to was removed, um, from the budget as line items, that would free up fifteen hundred that doesn't have to go into the grant and aid. But these are two separate things, so what do you wanna do with the four hundred left in the grant and aid budget? Um, Counselor O'Keefe?
Sorry, I need some clarification on this fifteen hundred, where, where is it? Where is it coming from?
So, if-
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, we have, um, five hundred dollars for each of three of the churches funding their, um, uh, soup kitchen, and that's a line item in the budget, and you'll see it on the back of the, um, summary page, that's in front of your package.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Okay. So, that was a motion, did you wanna make one?
No, just another question, I guess there has to be a motion, and then I'll ask a question about that.
Um, go ahead.
I would move that we continue the, uh, funding of five hundred dollars, uh, apiece to each of the three churches.
Second.
Um, we don't actually need a motion like that, because that's what's gonna happen if we do nothing. And if that motion fails, uh, that will be awkward. So, does somebody want to change things, if so, they could make a motion, otherwise, I, I don't think, um, the mayor's motion would be appropriate.
Fair enough, I, I just understood staff to request direction, but I realized it didn't have to be by a motion.
Yep.
So, I'll, I'll withdraw that.
No, no motion, but can we, can we just leave it in there? Where it is? We have to get that-
Just the default.
We don't have to say anything then, right?
Mister Chair, one point of clarification would be to, uh, confirm whether you want it in there perpetually, or if you want it reviewed after another number of years.
I would move that it remain perpetual.
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded, and now we're into discussion, Counselor Fallet, then Counselor-
So, Counselor O'Keefe was before my, my hand.
Counselor O'Keefe, um, then I'm gonna go to the mover, then I'm gonna go to Counselor Fallet.
So, my recollection is, we had, I thought we had had some discussion about this during our budget discussions, and that, um, staff had talked to one or other of these churches, and had also consulted with the food bank, and there seemed to be some question as to whether these funds were still required or not. Any, is anybody else, is there?
I think, um, that question to staff-
To staff.
If you can recall the discussion.
I, I do recall the food bank being brought up at some point, but it's not something that staff ever pursued, what, uh, we did was follow previous council's direction to contact the, the churches and determine whether they, they still wanted the funding, and they all do.
Okay.
So, uh, but continuing on from that past direction, we were to bring it back during, uh, this year's grants process, just to confirm it.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
In our, uh, in our package, we have a letter from one of the three, uh, churches, and, uh, at the end, it says, the minister, this particular ministry averages a hundred and fifty people served and fed each week. And, uh, thus I, I support perpetual, I don't, I ju- I only know anecdotally that the other two churches are also, uh, serving many meals, but, uh, uh, that's why I made the motion.
Counselor Fallet?
Um, just to go back a little, my recollection was, this came about in the previous council, it was, uh, not something that was initiated by the churches, their soup kitchens, uh, are in part a social for their, for their members, but they're open to the public. And, um, there certainly are members of the public who come in who perhaps have a need. Um, one of the questions I would just say from a buying power, if we're taking, uh, town money to, to support this, whether that is the best buying power for the fifteen hundred dollars, if I look at, um, an organization such as a food bank who is buying in much larger quantities, um, I wonder if that's maybe where they should be going to the food bank for support, rather than to, to the town, um, and, and the, uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna cover this, it has nothing to do with the value of service and, and a worthy cause, I'm not, um, speaking to that, I'm just looking at whether or not this is something the town should be doing, is, is supporting this. Um, or if there's another way within the community that, that, um, you know, if we're saying soup kitchen, perhaps we're looking at this as, as a charity, and I'm wondering if that's exactly what it is. So, because the churches hadn't come to us looking for the funding, um, we reached out to them, or an individual from council did. I'm looking at a needs basis there. So, um, it's just a little bit of background I would just share with the rest of, uh, council, just to, to think about when we're looking at this.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, the points are well taken, um, the town provides, uh, substantial support to the food bank, um, we built the building, and, and, uh, we now partner with, uh, the other two municipalities, uh, in terms of some cause, perhaps Mister Hissick could elaborate on those?
That's correct, we did build the food bank with, uh, minimal contributions from our neighbors, and continues to be, uh, up, maintained by the town with contributions from both neighbors. Don't have the exact number of annual maintenance, uh, something in the order of sixteen thousand, maybe?
Thank you, uh, the, the support is substantial, and, and, uh, I think this is, uh, you know, the, the meals served through the three churches are, is a different vehicle. Uh, perhaps it's not the most cost-effective on a, on a pure cost-benefit analysis, but I think it is an, another valuable, um, service in our community.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Um, the, the way I'm looking at it is that it's also, uh, an oper- uh, a social opportunity for those who are maybe from a certain segment of the population that, um, to come out and have a meal with, with, um, other people in the community. So, I'm looking at, at it more from that vantage point than whether or not they could get more buying power from the food bank, I think, for me, yeah.
Okay, um, so we've had a fairly good discussion, and we've got a motion that the, uh, uh, fifteen hundred in line items, um, be perpetual in the budget. So, I'll call the question, all in favor? Posed, that's carried. Okay, um, now we're back to the, we still have four hundred dollars unallocated, do we leave it unallocated, or do we put it somewhere?
I would move that it be, um, given in addition to the fifteen hundred to the, uh, San Ex Marine Rescue Society.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? Posed, that's carried. Okay, um, we've completely dealt with, uh, all of the applications and spent all the money. So, um, I think it's time to move on to the next agenda item. And our next agenda item is item seven A, uh, development variance application number DV one zero zero two seven five, this is two-three-nine-six Amelia Avenue. And, uh, it's to allow for new roof and decorative columns to be constructed on an existing legal non-conforming portion of a residence, and we have Tara coming, the designer. You have the floor?
Your button.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yep.
All right. Um, thank you for hearing our, our presentation tonight, this is twenty-three ninety-three Amelia Avenue. Uh, if you go down Fifth Street, almost to Roberts Bay, you'll see it on your right, uh, just a couple blocks before Roberts Bay. It's, the home is from about the nineteen thirties, uh, so it predates the zoning bylaw, and it probably predates Amelia Avenue as well. Um, just guessing on that, but based on where it's been built, I bet it probably had a lot of land around it. Uh, so what we're left with is a property where the front yard setback is three point six-six meters. And the requirement is for seven point five meters. Uh, the interior has been tended to, to great lengths, it is quite amazing on the inside, and now it's time for a new exterior, and, and an addition as well. So, the plans for the addition include a two-and-a-half story addition at the rear, uh, that's the bit, the highest bit you see at the back. There's a half-story storage area that is below ground, a first story, what we're calling a winter room, which is level with the s- second half of the existing bit, and then the second story, which we're calling the library, which has access to the rooftop deck. Uh, the two-story addition at the right includes a garage on the main and a suite on the upper. So, this project will be receiving a, quite a change in style, uh, so the hip roof and wood shakes will become parapet roof with tile siding and decorative columns. It'll match what's inside the house. It's pretty cool. So, the, the crux of the situation is here, um, the location of a portion of the dwelling within the currently required setback area, the seven point five meters, is protected by section five-two-nine of the Local Government Act. The structure may not be altered to increase the degree of nonconformity. So basically, it's legal, existing, nonconforming, and so we need your permission to make changes to it if we're, if we're adding to the nonconformity. So all we're actually adding is the parapet roof, which in, in total, the massing of that roof line will actually be less. It's just that within that first few meters of the front of the home, it's actually a little bit higher. So the arrow on the right pointing at that little piece of the parapet is making it higher in that location, but the dotted line we're actually removing. So the net is actually a decrease in mass of, of the house. So, and at the end of the day, the whole project will tie in with the addition, which is, which is quite a, quite a large addition. It would look really funny if we left the old roof and the old wood siding, and then did the rest of the addition in the style that we're proposing. And just to clarify, that the rooftop patio will be divided so that the setback area, which is the sort of front two columns there, will just be roof, and the patio bit will be behind the seven point five meter setback that, that is current zoning. And the front yard setback, which is currently three point six-six meters, we're just asking to reduce that just slightly so that we can add the decorative columns so that the front of the existing face will match the rest of what's being added on, which has no problems at all. It all conforms to the zoning bylaw. So in summary, the current setback hasn't caused any apparent issues in the last ninety or so years. The alternate roof line has a net decrease in mass within the setback, and that the new cladding and decorative columns on the existing structure will tie in perfectly with the addition, resulting in a cohesive project. And that's supposed to spin around, but I'm not sure how to make it without the keyboard, anyways. Do you have any questions? I think that's the end of it. Oh my, there it goes. Never tried that before. You can see the back of the house, too. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from committee, Counselor Fallon and Counselor Garn?
Thank you very much. Ms. Cumming, can you go back a couple of slides where you were showing the rooftop patio?
Yeah.
There. Where, where the wording says, or the, the label down there says setback area, what's, is that Amelia?
This is Amelia here.
Amelia's there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's Fifth Street.
So the seven point five meter setback that would be required for a new, completely new construction is?
Okay, okay, thank you. And one other question, if you weren't to put the columns in, would the roof still be supportable the way it is?
Yes, the columns are decorative.
Okay.
But they are intended to go around all the rest of the house.
Yes.
So the front would just look a little odd. It's, we're adding this much to our nonconformity.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Garn?
Just for clarification, it's two-three-nine-six Amelia? It had two-three-nine-three on there. I think it's two-three-nine-six.
My apologies.
Is that correct? Just some periphery questions. With regards to the front facing on Amelia, there's a fair bit of shrubbery and, I believe, kind of a double-edged garage, kind of entrance. Will they be taken away? Is that what, or will there be anything put in its place if it is taken away?
The shrubbery in front of the garage will be removed.
Okay.
This, the new garage, so the...
Right, I'm just referring to like the whole, there's kind of like a, a growth area that covers the front of the house as you go down towards Fifth Street. I'm assuming that's going to probably be taken away during your construction. Will there be anything put back in its place?
There's only a portion of motion in front of the hot tub.
Yeah.
That will be removed, and otherwise everything up Fifth Street will remain, right there where there's...
Up on, up on Amelia, that, that stuff will remain? Okay.
Yeah, that will remain, all that corner.
Okay. The fencing that's along, that separates you guys from twenty-four oh four Amelia, will that be remaining, or will something else be taking its place? Because I noticed it's a fairly high fence. It gives a lot of privacy to your neighbor.
That remains.
That remains. Yeah. You're adding a suite, so I'm just wondering about parking. Is it, there's adequate parking on your site for whoever lives in the suite?
Yeah.
I think I had one more question, and it was to do with... If anybody else has any, go ahead. I'll come back.
Counselor O'Keefe?
Not questions, but just comments. So, I like that you're making improvements to an older building. I like that we're keeping a building that's been in the community for a long time from an environmental impact perspective, and also because it's buildings like that add a lot of charm and uniqueness to Sydney. So I'm glad that you're making improvements rather than tearing it down, and I like that you're incorporating a secondary suite, so we need that. So I think the variance is being proposed are relatively minor, balanced with all the, the benefits I think will come from this, so I, I, I like it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Remembered it. It, it's a reasonably significant change. I'm wondering if, if you have, at this point, engaged any of your neighbors around, just to get their take on how they feel about it.
I have only spoken to one of the neighbors, the owner of the building directly across the street. So, straight across from the steps there, they're in favor. And I have a letter ready to go out, so I will be speaking to the other neighbors before they get the letter from the town. I don't like people being surprised by letters from the town.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Fallon?
I'll move the recommendation, number one, that owners and tenants in occupation...
Excuse me, I see staff having a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to bring the committee's attention to an omission in the staff recommendation. Under number one, in the bracketed portion where it says, "To increase the nonconformity of the front setback through, through the addition of a roof parapet, after parapet should read 'and decorative columns.'" Thank you.
Okay. So, recommendation number one, that owners and tenants in occupation of property within seventy-five meters, two-hundred-and-forty-six feet of two-three-nine-six Amelia Avenue, be notified regarding development variance permit application number one zero-zero-two-seven-five to increase the nonconformity of the front setback through the addition of a roof parapet and the decorative columns. Forgot that right? And that any written correspondence be received be forwarded to council at the time of consideration of approval of the variance. And two, that if approved, only the area of the roof further than seven point five meters from the south property line be used as a rooftop deck.
I'll second that.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, everything Counselor O'Keefe said about what she liked about this design, I, I liked as well. And, and the one thing that I wanted to add for the benefit of the public, that we know, one of the things we hear when people take, this, this is something, you know, a couple of other people have done. Take one of the older houses, which are very small, and modern families don't understand how to fit inside, and add more onto the back to make it livable by our newer standards, and add a suite. And that what this application has done is actually made everything look the same when they've added on that back end. And I know one of the things a lot of us heard when we were outdoor knocking was that when new, new additions like this are built on, and they meet all the requirements, and they don't need to come before council, they conform, but they haven't necessarily made them look like the rest of the house, and people found that really jarring. We know people don't necessarily always like the, the flat-top parapet roof, but I feel the fact that what you've, doing this in this manner, I mean, gave livable space on the, on the roof, but it also decreased the massing even as you're adding to it, so it is actually a means of offsetting that. So I feel that from the perspective of the public, this should, they have managed to take steps to mitigate concerns that we know people have had with this kind of development, so I have no problem with it.
Okay, so we've got the motion in front of us. I'll call the question. All in favor? Posed? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to seven B. This is a request for a street vending license by Island Treats, and I understand that we've got someone from Island Treats who's going to give us a bit of information, and then committee can ask questions. So if you could just give us your name and address?
Certainly. My name is Pat Woodward, and I'm a returning resident of Sydney after twenty years living on the Prairies. Sorry, what?
Yeah, we've got your application, so whatever you'd like to add to the information we've currently got.
Just thank you for take, letting me take the opportunity to, to bring this new and exciting business to Sydney, and obviously to a much warmer climate. We are requesting for a street vending license for two thousand and nineteen, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Great. Okay, committee, do you have any questions for the presenter? Counselor O'Keefe?
Hi. Thank you. So, there's some, some concern about existing brick and mortar businesses, about impact on their business. And so if we were to, to limit your license to areas outside of that, I, I'm just wondering how that will impact you, whether it's still advantageous for you to proceed? I notice in your, in the, in the report that there's a desire to, you know, attend at street markets and festivals, which are often held in the downtown area in Beacon Park. So if we excluded those areas, would your venture still be viable, I guess?
We don't feel that it's going to be taking away from the brick and mortar businesses. We're simply offering single, individual, prepackaged frozen treats and ice creams. If, it also gives customers a chance to sample that and, and then go to a brick and mortar building and purchase a larger, a larger tub or... So, we, we feel that it's actually going to, to help the other ice cream stores or store of brick and mortar that sell ice cream.
So I just, so I just wanted to clarify, what I'm wondering is if council decided to limit where you could do that so that it was not in the downtown core, and it wasn't in Beacon. So if it was, you're, you were restricted from those places, would your operation, would you still want to move forward?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Yes. I do have a question in regards to the Beacon Park, part of that question. If we, I understand if we could be limited to going through the park, but to continue on the pathways that go around Sydney, if, if we can venture into that, that side.
I've got Counselor Rintul first, and then the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation and the request. The business itself, you know, you're locally owned, operating in business providing the service. Where else are you providing it, or have you provided it locally, or is this brand new?
This is brand new. This is brand new.
Okay. So do you know, then, in terms of your request here to have four of these vending carts operating, or is the business viable with less than four?
We would like to go with four. We don't want to just limit ourselves to, we're also going to be hiring out to, to private businesses along, along the main streets of Sydney. If they like, choose to hire us out for promotional events or product advertising, then of course we will be, we, we would like, I guess, permission to, to be in the commercial downtown during that time. But for the most part, we, we would just like to, we would like to stay away from the main streets, mainly due to traffic and for safety concerns for employees.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So my understanding, and, and I'd just like to, to see that we have shared understanding from the proponent, and perhaps staff could clarify, but in your proposal, it says you would be operating on designated bike paths, roadways, parks, and public areas all the while adhering to bylaws and rules and regulations. My understanding from looking at our current policy and from the staff report is that the only designated bike path in Sydney is, is the Lockside Trail.
Correct.
So that would exclude any of the walkways along the waterfront? Bicycle's aren't permitted on the, on the waterfront walkways?
I'm under the understanding from reading the signs that cyclists must dismount, and you cannot ride the bike, but we can also push the bikes as well.
Okay, if I have a good clarification from staff, please?
Your worship, that's true. There's nothing to prevent cyclists from pushing a bike along the waterfront walkway.
Okay, and so we don't make a distinction between a two-wheeled bicycle and a, and a, this would be a three-wheel?
This is a three-wheel tricycle.
A three-wheel tricycle, which would be substantially larger?
It would be wider and would consume more of the pathway width. But we don't have a distinction.
Okay, so it would be allowed on the waterfront walkways?
Sorry, if you don't mind, just to add that the access to the walkway, if that were to be the case, would end at where the column one designation for the OCP starts. So approximately Oakville on the south side, and I guess sort of Mount Baker, Second Street area on the north side. So substantial amount of the walkway would be inaccessible under the current recommendation.
Right, so the proponent, your, your understanding of, of that area that would be excluded?
Correct.
So that would, that would exclude the entire waterfront of, in the Beacon Park?
The entire waterfront.
Because that's in the commercial?
Okay.
In the commercial zone? So the downtown extends from Sydney Avenue, across Beacon, over to Bevan?
Correct.
And, like, there's a little bit down, down the fingers of, of, of Second, Third, and Fourth, and, and Fifth. And again, similarly with, we have a number of parks, Tullisda Park, Yurakua Park, other parks in West Sydney and so on. They have pathways through the park. Are bicycles permitted to be walked through those pathways?
I, I, I don't recall if we have signage up for, for cycling in the parks or not.
Okay, I would, I have a concern with, with the size of the vehicle, with it being operated, being operated on the pathways, either on the waterfront or in the, in the local parks. Those pathways in the local parks tend to be fairly narrow. And I think the, given the current level of pedestrian activity and scooter, and scooters and walkers on our, on our waterfront walkway, I wouldn't, or, sorry, other walkway outside the column one area, whether it be Tullisda Park, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of. If, if this committee did make those recommendations to exclude those areas, do you see the business still being viable, just operating on roadway and, in residential areas?
It does add to a safety concern due to the amount of traffic and the population of Sydney how it's grown. There are certain pathways along the fishing, the fishing pier and the wharf that we've asked residents and tourists over the course of four or five months if they would be interested in, if they're all, they're all in favor. So we would limit ourselves to the pathways where it does get narrow and stay in the, the more wider locations.
I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting committee might make a recommendation such that you wouldn't have access to the waterfront walkways so you would be excluded to the, to the streets outside the column one. So that would be, is it Eastview Park Road that comes, that, that horseshoes onto, onto First Street? Okay. I, I appreciate where the activity is, but again, it's, my remarks are concerned with pedestrian safety and...
Right, and we've taken considerate, into consideration the width of the, of the tricycle. The maximum width is, is three feet, and the, the length is actually going to be shortened due to height situations for our, our operators.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you. I guess a question through the chair to, to staff in regards to how this vehicle is classified. So it's referred to as a bicycle, but then it's also referred to, it's electrical. So it's, it's, to me, that's, it's not completely a bicycle. It's a vehicle that's powered through electricity. It mentions that all operators will hold a B C driver's license. So I guess what I'm wondering is, in terms of rules towards, in terms of straight bicycle, and then a, a vehicle that's powered by some other means... whether those are classified differently in terms of access to pathways and roadways in, um, and in terms of enforcement?
I understand, uh, your concern. Uh, the, the electric portion of it is a battery assisted, uh, to give, uh, because there's a considerable weight to the, to the bicycle. Um, it, uh, it's going to, it's more of a power assist, uh, to help with, uh, to heal, for hills and, and for weight.
And I guess, and-
Thank you. I guess the question's being directed to staff, and, uh, does staff have, uh...
And I, and to add on to that, just, uh, insurance as well. So I know there's inch, um, mention of insurance, general liability insurance, but I wasn't sure if that's just general business insurance, or whether because they're going to be on a road and they're electric powered, whether they have to have I C B C insurance as well? No?
So we'll let staff respond.
Okay.
Under the Motor Vehicle Act, uh, it's considered a bicycle.
Okay.
Power assist is considered a bicycle.
Okay.
Uh, they're allowed on the Lockside Trail, as an example.
Okay.
Um, as far as the insurance is concerned, that would be business liability insurance. Um, bicycles on the road do require insurance from I C B C.
Okay. So Counselor Fallon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we, we now have e-bikes being very popular, and mobility being what it is, people are also in trikes, whether they are purely pedal-powered or, uh, electrical assisted with a battery. So this is, I would presume it's a version thereof, and, um, but I'm sensing you, from your business plan, you would really like to be where the pedestrian is. And we have a policy in Sydney would like to keep the riding vehicles, bikes, trikes, whether they are e-bikes or not, um, shouldn't be propelled from the seat. I don't know how that fits within your, your, um, plan, because now you are, you're, you're walking, your operator's walking the bike and creating quite a mass. And, uh, so I struggle with, with that on the pathway. To put you on the roadway is not where the majority of your customers are going to be, because you're looking at your customers being on foot or on bikes and stopping you. So I'm struggling a little bit of how this is going to fit in with our town. I appreciate, um, the idea, but I'm not sure that this is the right fit the way it's come to be.
Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, and thank you for bringing an interesting new, uh, business idea to the town for us to discuss the implications of. I suppose perhaps I'm more familiar with the cargo bike and the type of bike you're looking at as kind of a cargo bike geek myself, so I don't have the reservations about the bike itself and the electric power. It's, it's simply just like a, a cargo bike that's being adapted for business. So somebody with a Dutch bike, like a back Fiat style with the box on the front, it would be very similar. And that person would probably not be looking to take their bike down those walkways. I, I know even with my skinnier cargo bike, I wouldn't try to take it down those walkways because it would be a hazard for pedestrians, for sure. Uh, when I looked at it, I thought it was a very, it's a, it's a cool idea, because what I know a lot of people are doing in other cities around the world is that instead of having an ice cream truck, right, which needs gas and higher insurance and, and all of that, you have an ice cream bike, and it keeps your operating costs down, and, and you are a lot more mobile. And so I saw this as just another type of ice cream truck, and presumably we already allow those. So having it outside in the residential area and with the same access to parks as a regular ice cream truck would have, I don't think should be hard for the business, because ice cream trucks already do well, being able to just cruise slowly through residential neighborhoods and kids run out and buy ice cream, or at least they used to. Um, and, uh, the, the pathways in other parks, I know I, I'm behind, rathed out, and you wouldn't be able to get, get a v- a bike this large down those walking paths, and, and I don't think it would bring you any benefit anyway. Um, just knowing where the people kind of cluster by the playgrounds and where they're situated in our, our parks, I, I don't think that would be, uh, it shouldn't be a problem. I agree with the, with it not being excluded from the access from the waterfront, not just for pedestrians, but also because of, um, that's where the competition with the other existing brick and mortar businesses already are. If you want an ice cream, it's no, nothing, um, as the recommendation said, to walk from Beacon Park. So having ice cream vehicles outside that commercial co- core, the way we would have an ice cream truck in a residential area, I, I don't see a problem with. I, I do wonder whether we would have the population density, or even the tourist density just on a typical day to support four trucks, or four, four bicycles operating? But that's just my wonder, but otherwise.
It seems that we're getting into the discussion of the merits of, of it, and what should actually be the motion put forward, and not particularly questions and clarification. So if I'm correct in that, I'd just ask you to, uh, sit down and we'll take it from here. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, uh, provide some clarification on Counselor Duncan's comments, uh, an ice cream truck would also need to go through the same process, uh, were they to be entrusted in operating in Sydney? Um, if you're aware of any rogue ice cream, ice cream trucks out there, please, uh, let us know. They shouldn't be out there.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Garner?
Yeah, those rogue ice cream trucks. You're making me feel old, because it hearkens to me back to my days in Vernon, growing up with the, the Dicky D boys, we called them, on their little cycles, and they rang their bell, and gosh darn, we ate a lot of that ice cream. So I, I, you know, and depending on the neighborhood you go in Sydney, I think you can make, uh, a pretty good go of it. There's a lot of kids in my neighborhood that, uh, will gladly come out and pester their parents for ice cream. Uh, as far as, yeah, I, I am, I'm concurring with the other thoughts, as far as the downtown. Um, there would be businesses that would object, of course, and there's the safety and pedestrian issues, so... Yeah, I, I, it's, I think your, your target's got to be the residential areas, I think, for, for many reasons, and, um, I, I don't know whether it's viable or not. I, I would like to think it would be. I, I, just because you seem like a nice person, I would buy an ice cream from your vendor. And maybe even from my wife, too, I don't know. So, uh, I, I concur with a lot of the thoughts being expressed up here, and, um, but I, you know, I, I think in your residential areas, it's, it's, you know, we've had trucks drive through, and I would much prefer to see a bicycle come through than a truck, uh, just because I don't like their music. But I, I, I wish you luck and hope you have success with it.
So, um, I'll just comment that, um, when I used to work in the West Sydney industrial area, uh, which was quite a while ago, the cone cab would come around quite regularly. And when it would pull into the parking lot of the complex that, um, my employer was in, they would announce over the P A system that the cone cab was outside, and the building would literally empty out, and there was at least fifty people lined up getting ice cream. So I think that you have an opportunity to do pretty well, um, in some parts of Sydney. Anyway, committee, I'm looking for some kind of motion. Uh, we do have a recommendation in the staff report. Uh, there's been suggestions of something perhaps a bit different. Where are we going?
Yeah, if I can, I'd just, uh, comment, uh, first, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I mean, I guess I'm a little leery. I recognize that we're not, uh, in the dragon's den here, and this isn't, uh, we're not lucky to sort of control the market. Uh, I'm a little leery of the four vehicles, and I suggest that because I, I wonder, uh, if, uh, if we're opening the door, you know, pretty wide, uh, for this and doing that. I concur with some of the comments I heard earlier around perhaps limiting this, uh, service to, uh, uh, you know, designated streets only, uh, uh, as referenced, uh, beyond what's here in, in point three of the report. So, uh, I, you know, I may be inclined, uh, to support, uh, somewhat more, uh, you know, limited, uh, uh, recommendation than what I see here.
Counselor O'Keefe?
I'm, I'm fine with f- four trucks. I mean, to me, I think it's up to the, uh, the, the business owner who's, uh, done their research and taking the risk on this to decide, uh, what, what's viable for them or not. So, um, whether it's four, or two, or five trucks, I'm, I'm not too, too bothered about that. Um, we've had several letters from businesses, restaurants downtown that are concerned, but I think that the way the staff recommendation reads that, um, these carts would be, uh, designated, uh, outside of the downtown core, and that the, uh, and Beacon Park in the waterfront, so I'm fine with that. The only other question I have for staff is if, uh, another individual would c- comes forward later in the year for a similar sort of proposal, uh, whether it's a truck or a bicycle, is this meant to give e- exclusivity to this, um, particular vendor? Or would other vendor licenses, um, be considered as well?
Refer that to staff?
Uh, the answer is no, there, it, there's no exclusivity implied here. Staff's thinking is that, uh, you know, if it were approved, another one were approved, they would have to battle it out in the marketplace.
Okay, so, uh...
Yeah, I beg your pardon, there, there's a reference there to some, some letters of, of concern about this. Were those circulated to council through to staff?
No, they arrived, uh, late in the day today, um, because it's not a council meeting. They'll come forward, uh, to council, uh, on the twenty-fifth.
And I'll just comment, the recommendation from committee of the whole will also go to council, so it can be reconsidered if appropriate. Um, Mr. Mayor?
I would like to, um, move the staff recommendation with a slight change in wording on point three. So there are six points, uh, in the staff recommendation. The first, that the applicant meets all the requirements of the Street Vending Policy D V dash zero one zero. Uh, two, that prior to issuance of the business license, the applicant provide proof of Vancouver Island Health Authority approval and the required liability insurance. Three, that the vending carts be limited to operating only within the town of Sydney, and that the carts be restricted from entering, entering areas designated as COME one. Um, and I'm going to say COME one downtown, uh, in the town's official community plan, uh, as well as all, uh, sorry, what I want to say is only to operate on roadways and to exclude all pathways and sidewalks. Number four, that the vending carts remain mobile at all times and only stop to make a sale. Five, that waste generated from the business be prohibited from being deposited in municipal waste containers. And six, that the business license be limited to the retail sale of ice cream products only.
Do I have a second here?
Second.
Okay, and now, uh, if I could ask, uh, staff just for clarification on the, um, COME one downtown in the town's official community plan, um, should that also reflect Beacon Park? Because I don't recall that being part of COME one.
I think it might be excluded through the, through, uh, saying that it only operates on wa- roadways, excluding all pathways and sidewalks.
The nice thing is, uh, of having this set up is he's got access to the, uh, O C P map, and we can look exactly at what COME one is. It's the area in red. And it also would not include the, um, Tourist Information Centre. Am I correct?
But there'd be no way to get to it. Eastview Park and, and the walkway in front of Eastview Park would be accessible under the current, sorry, except in areas that changes.
Okay, um, could I just ask for clarification on the no way to get to it? Does that mean they literally could not, uh, if they want to get from the South Sydney to North Sydney, they have to cross the highway, go around, and Lockside Trail? Maybe cross Lockside Trail?
A ferry might be an option as well. I guess staff was sort of thinking that a, a quick transit down one of the streets would not be a huge issue.
So a transit to, um...
Potentially tempting, I suppose, but...
Park at the Tourist Information Centre?
But then they can't stop.
I, I guess my question really is for the mover, whether, um, you're wanting to exclude, uh, all the areas that are bounded by that, uh, red COME one?
Yes.
Okay. I think we've got enough clarity. The wording may need to be tweaked a bit, but we now understand the intent of the motion. Okay, um, committee, any further discussion on it? Uh, yes, we did have a second here. Okay, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I had forgotten what I was going to ask, but I just remembered it. So the way it is phrased now with on roadways, I think that might exclude the Lockside Trail. Since they are just an e-bike, they should be allowed to use the Lockside Trail. I guess the question is whether we are concerned about them using the Lockside Trail to get through Sydney, or whether if somebody flagged them down to buy a, an ice cream bar on the Lockside Trail, we would want to exclude that as well. I feel like, I, I don't think there's a prohibition about that, so...
Uh, and just to clarify as well, there's a section of trail from, I believe, the Wyler Overpass northward that is not the Lockside Trail, that's a town trail as well.
And there's also the, um, multipurpose path around the airport, which, you know, has quite a bit in Sydney, too. Okay, um, I think we're looking for some clarification. I think we've generally got the motion and the intent. What we're going to need is some clarification when it comes to council for a, actual adoption.
Okay, the intention of the motion as stated was to exclude all pathways and sidewalks. Uh, my only question through the staff would be, is the Locktr- Lockside Trail actually under Sydney jurisdiction? Or is it C R D? In which case we couldn't give direction to C R D.
Sorry, I missed that, Mr. Chair?
The Lockside Trail, is that under Sydney jurisdiction, or is it a C R D trail?
It's a C R D, but...
But we, our business license bylaw would still apply, would it not?
I suppose so. Um, one, um, one thought is that, uh, you might want to consider perhaps since, is excluding, um, excluding, um, park pathways. Uh, instead of, instead of suggesting roadways, but excluding, uh, excluding, uh, park pathways as opposed to, as opposed to roadways to sort of get around that, uh, that element. It's just a suggestion.
Sorry, I guess I said both. I said excluding pathways and operating only on roadways. So I'm not sure which way it should be, where to...
I, I believe this, it was to say to exclude park pathways, and that gets at what you wanted, which is to keep out of the parks. But by stipulating only roadways, you've made it so that they can't go on the town section of the Lockside Trail, which is now no longer, whatever, and the Lockside Trail. Whereas if you just say excluding park pathways, that keeps them off the pedestrian-only pathways and walkways, but allows access to the bike and multi-use trails.
So I'm, uh, I'm hearing to exclude, uh, the operation from the, um, COME one area in the O C P and exclude them from, uh, pedestrian-only pathways. Is that...
It's an option.
Is... Not my motion, but it's, it's up to committee.
I, I think what we're looking for is just clarity on, uh...
For, for clarity, I, I don't, while there are tricycles or e-bikes on our pathways, whether they be the Lockside Trail or otherwise, they're not businesses. And so the distinction here is that this is a business operating on our pathways, and I think for pedestrian safety, they should not be operating on pathways in Sydney.
So now I think we have clarity, not any pathways. Okay, so, um, I guess we need direction from the committee. We've got clarity on the motion, all in favor. Calling the question all in favor? I'm seeing two opposed. Okay, um, that's defeated. So I think the only element of dissent is over the area that, that they'd be allowed to operate. I'm thinking I see everybody in favor of restricting them from the COME one area of the downtown. I'm looking for a motion that clarifies what's permitted with respect to pathways.
All right, I'll do a motion that just amends the recommendation to that the vending carts be limited to operating only within the town of Sydney and that the carts be restricted from entering areas designated as COME one, including the park areas included within that boundary and as, Beacon Park is included, sorry, as well as pedestrian trails within designated town parks. Well, sorry, Beacon Park, I feel, is included in the COME one, so it doesn't need to be pulled out because we've got three parks in there, right? The three Ps, we've got the visitor's center, East View Park and Beacon Park, and those would all be included by park areas included within the boundary of, of COME one. I guess East View is technically outside it, so plus East View Park.
Okay, so the motion is to exclude them from the COME one area of the OCP, Beacon Park, Bevan Park and East View Park and.
Pedestrian pathways within all town parks.
Okay.
So that would include all the cut-throughs through route down, the, the walkway around Rest Haven Park, all of that.
Okay, that's clear. And you're including all the other points in the staff recommendation in your motion?
That's correct.
Okay, do I have a second here?
Second for discussion.
Okay, discussion. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just need clarification on what's different. So are they, would they be allowed on the waterfront walkway outside the downtown area? For example, on Talista Park?
No.
So which walkways are they allowed?
It's a pedestrian only walkway in Talista Park. You're not allowed to bring your bicycles along. So all, in, in all town parks, the pedestrian only walkways, that's not a multimodal path, so.
So which pathways are they allowed on that I excluded?
The lockside trail, basically.
And the airport multipurpose path.
And the airport multipurpose path within the town of Sydney, so when they got to the boundary.
Sorry, so within, when they got to the boundary with North Sanich, they would have to turn around and pedal back, so it would only include that portion of it. So I guess I could exclude that just for the sake of whatever, but.
And the discussion we've had about people can walk their bikes on the path is irrelevant because what we're talking about is the business license. And what's being proposed is the business license wouldn't be valid regardless of whether they're walking the bike or otherwise. Okay, so we've got the, the motion on the table. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on then to our next agenda item, which is item eight A, the employee parking lot discussion. And I'll just remind committee that at the previous council meeting, we had some discussion about what the appropriate uses for the employee parking lot should be and the construction is expected to be completed fairly soon and it will be in operation, so staff's looking for some direction. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we do have the parking agreement with us this evening and I think if I remember correctly, at our last council meeting, the, the discussion point was around the different uses of the, of the parking space. So to be clear on definitions, as are included in the agreement, there is the, the public parking space and there is the Mary Winspear excluded parking area. And so we're not referring to the Mary Winspear excluded parking area, we're referring to the, the new, what is referred to as public parking space. And it has, defines operational hours as, public parking hours from seven AM to six PM. And the different uses would be employee parking, Mary Winspear patron parking, public parking, and one other defined use that we might choose, may or may not choose to permit would be trades. If they were working in construction zones, they might be issued passes to public park in this area and that has done, been done before in the gravel area previous at the Mary Winspear. The, when the idea was conceived of expanding that parking area substantially, one of the aims was to provide employee parking, to reduce the employee parking that occurs in particular on the residential streets to the north and to the south of the, of the downtown business district. In this agreement, as it currently reads, is that the town would be able to promote employee parking in these hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces that would be distinguished from Mary Winspear patron only parking. However, as is indicated in the agreement, and I'll read clause two point one, the society agrees to permit the public to park motor vehicles in the parking spaces during public parking hours and outside of public parking hours. And the reason that was included was because in the Mary Winspear trust, they're required to make their areas available to the public. And so in clause number two, it also says, in addition to the public parking, the society may permit patrons of the Mary Winspear Center to park motor vehicles in the parking spaces during public parking hours on an as-available basis. So what we see is between seven AM and six PM is while the town would be promoting employee parking in these hundred and sixty-seven spaces, in accordance with the trust of the Mary Winspear, Mary Winspear, or the public would be available to park there and Mary Winspear patrons would be able to park there as well. We saw clarification on this in two meetings with the Mary Winspear Center last week and in a meeting late last week, myself, Councilor Rantoul as the liaison to the Mary Winspear Center and our CIO Randy Humble and met with the chair and the executive director of Mary Winspear. And when we indicated that we were interested in putting signage up that would say this area is the only area that employees can park in from seven AM to six PM, they indicated that the, their trust would indicate that the area has to be signed as being available to the public as well. They also indicated that while in this original agreement, those parking hours were from seven to six PM, that they have no concerns with actually the public and employees parking there in the evening as well. And so they've, they've offered to, to remove that restriction and we agreed that, everyone agreed around the table that with, with what Mary Winspear is currently doing, and they only do not allow overnight parking from midnight to six AM. And so what we would do is at the, off Mary Winspear lands, just at the entrance to the new CSB building, we would put a sign up and it would have the traditional P for parking sign and then underneath it, it would say employee and public parking, if I remember, if I remember correctly. And so I think that's the gist. If there's any other discussion points fellow members would like to raise.
Counselor Garnett?
Yeah, I fully understand the trust portion of it. I, I guess my biggest concern with the whole thing is that this is from the get-go promoted as an employee parking lot. From the time I sat in, in, out in there in the audience and listened to why they were bringing it about was to get free up more parking spaces for the public and shoppers in our town by moving employees into a one designated area. So I understand there's parameters we have to work under, but my concern is that you, you have, you know, and Mary Winspear has events all the time, they're not just on the weekends. So you have, they're having an event where they have overfull parking, you have public parking there in town, and then you have employees that need to park. So if you're an employee who goes into that parking lot to look for a spot and then just hypothetically speaking, there aren't any, if it was me, I'd never go back. I would find my usual spot and that's where I'd continue to go. So my concern is how many people are we going to lose of employees just because they couldn't find a spot because we don't have designated spots for them? And that's the thing I'm struggling the most with, with this whole arrangement.
So I've got Counselor O'Keefe next and then the mayor.
So I share Counselor Garnett's concerns. I'm disappointed that this wasn't anticipated or discussed prior to the, the town spending a significant amount of money on that lot, taxpayers' money, on something now that we appear to have limited access to. So my understanding was we're spending this money so that we can designate parking for employees in the downtown core and relieve parking congestion. So it, when I read through this, it appears that, so we no longer have the ability to designate employee parking specifically. It also says that at discretion of Mary Winspear, they can, they can choose to start charging for overnight parking. We don't appear to have any control over that, so if they, if they want to as a revenue generator to lease out those spaces for overnight parking, they have the right to do that. And it doesn't seem that we have anything to say about that. It also talks about Mary Winspear managing enforcement. And so I guess my question was going to be about what would that look like and how would they manage that? But now that I see that there's going to be no employee parking designated anyways, there doesn't seem to be much reason for enforcement anyways, I guess, because it's pretty well anybody, anybody can park there. So yeah, and, you know, no provision for construction workers or construction vehicles as we had talked about. So I guess overall, I'm disappointed in the, in the agreement and that those things weren't considered prior to the building of the lot.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So this agreement was reviewed and approved by previous council, so it's, it's not, this is not new. This is not an agreement that's just come forward. It was approved by the previous council and those restrictions under the Mary Winspear trust were appreciated at the time that this agreement was signed. In terms of the comment with regards to employees not finding a parking spot and not coming back, employees every day sometimes have to fall, find an alternate location, they can't get the space that they want. Sometimes if they get in very early, they do, but employees who start through the day often have to look to two or three places to find a parking space. With regards to the Winspear Center taking in revenue, it wasn't a concern and it certainly isn't a concern to me for employees about what the Mary Winspear Center does with the parking space between midnight and, and six AM. I think there's ample parking for any of the businesses that are open at that time.
So if I could make some comments on this, in the past, the Mary Winspear has made some of its parking lot space available for some of the, the traveling carnival, has occupied a substantial amount of the space, denying it for public parking. I know that there have in the past been RVs parked on the Mary Winspear lands overnight and again denying it for public during those periods. So clearly there is the possibility that at certain periods of time, the space may not be available to the public. I understand the, the general concern, so I guess I'm simply coming at it from a different perspective. I think public parking should only be permitted for three hours on the site, just like any other parking lot in Sydney. And what that would mean is in particular, that a group of people can't carpool from downtown, meet at the Mary Winspear parking lot, park there as they all jump into a single car and take the ferry to Vancouver and come back later on. We don't want this becoming a park and ride. Don't want that happening for the airport too. And a three-hour parking limit would in fact stop that. The suggestion would be that employees could get a pass from the Mary Winspear and they could park for, you know, not restricted by three hours. And Mary Winspear events or patrons could also get a pass, different pass, because presumably that one has a particular date range that would be valid and they don't have to limit their stay to three hours. And if Mary Winspear makes some deal with somebody for overnight, I'm fine with that. I'm also fine with the idea of trades parking and they can get a pass too. If, if something like that was done, I think the majority of my concerns would be alleviated. And the only other tweak I might offer is that public parking doesn't start till nine thirty. That gives employees a chance to get there first, that's all. You do all those things, I'm perfectly happy and I don't think that would be too onerous and hopefully the Mary Winspear might agree. Counselor Fallon and then Mr. Humble.
So one thing I would add to that is the chair commented on shoppers or the public three-hour limitation. One of the difficulties we are seeing and have heard over a period of time is people say they want to be able to park their car and go about and do things in Sydney without having to worry about moving their car. By the time you have lunch, you go shopping, if you have an appointment or something like that, four to six hours easily gets swallowed up. So there has to be some sort of accommodation for that purpose in mind. I appreciate the bulk passengers coming out and dropping their car off and using another form of transportation, but I think if we're going to try to make this a fit for as many of the needs that we have within our community, that, that is one way we need to go as well.
Okay, Counselor O'Keefe? Oh, sorry, Mr. Humble.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, having met with the Winspear Center now on several occasions, including when we were negotiating this, this agreement as directed by the previous council, yeah, it was made very, very clear all along through the process that, that there had to be a public component based on, based on the trust. We made it clear that there had to be an element where we were able to promote the use of the parking lot for use by downtown employees and again, it's reflected in the agreement. I think what's being, if, 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 what, what Counselor Wainwright might be suggesting, I think we'll have to renegotiate and open up a negotiation on the terms of the agreement because I think, again, based on the discussions that we've had with them and certainly more recent discussions, I think they would be challenged by, by that. Under section two point eight, it talks about unreserved and undesigned spaces under the agreement. It says explicitly, the parking spaces shall be available as provided for under this agreement on an unreserved, where available basis, provided that some parking spaces shall be designated for parking by persons with disabilities as designated by, by the parking area plan. So again, clearly indicating that it's a first come, first served basis situation. Then the other, finally, I just wanted to point out that indeed, there's a lot of money being spent on this lot, over a million dollars to create it. A hundred and sixty-seven spots are being created. It won't serve anyone's interest if, if, if we, if we don't have that lot close to capacity right from, right from the get-go. And I think there's an opportunity to market and promote this as employee parking and have it signed as such, but at the end of the day, based on the agreement, we're not able to restrict public access from using the, the parking lot.
So Counselor O'Keefe then, Counselor Rantoul, then the mayor.
So what I'm wondering, question back, back to staff is whether. whether councillor Wainwright's proposal to limit parking for a certain period of time, it still doesn't deny access to the public for the parking. So it's just putting a time limit on it. And in terms of reserved spots, we wouldn't need reserved spots if all we're saying is employees would put something on their dash that said they're, they're allowed to be there longer than others. So I wonder if that's still sort of honoring their, the terms of their trust in terms of allowing people there, but just limiting the amount of time.
If I can through the chair, yeah, it challenged for me to speak for them in terms of how they would interpret that. I would say that they would, they would look at that as being a, a, a significant inhibitor to, to, to public access. And that's how I think they would read that. I mean, for, again, from a staff perspective, honestly, I think there's an opportunity here to get this thing complete. Let it operate for a year. See how, see how the use of the, the lot transpires with respect to employee and public. That's one of the reasons we're looking at going to a pass system right from the get-go. So there's a way to somehow monitor the use by employees and, and then assess the situation and, and perhaps then look at revisiting this with the Winspear if they, if they're open to that. It's just a suggestion.
Councillor Rintoul.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and with respect to the CEO's suggestion with regards to, you know, looking for a successful launch and getting this up and, and running. Yeah, I think we've got a lot to learn about the potential utilization for, for the lot. And so I concur, I like the idea of having the, the employee parking passes so that we can gauge, you know, use of that element of, of a parker. And, and also I, I would just say that the Memorial Park Society in my mind has been, you know, quite approachable with respect to this. They are taking on the, the task of enforcement. And so I'm, I'm not sure that may be an element they're uncomfortable with if we're looking to restrict parking to three hours or to have public parking start at, at X time. You know, that, those sort of, sort of, those terms are not in the signed agreement that we have with them currently. And so I would somewhat caution council in terms of trying to revisit those sort of fundamentals that aren't in the agreement currently. And, and speak in favor of the CEO's comments that perhaps we want to have a good, good look at how this is working a year from now and sit down with the MPS and work out some bugs because I'm sure there'll be a few at that point in time we can address, you know, fairly for all parties.
Mr. Mayor.
I would concur, concur with councillor Rintoul's remarks. I won't repeat all of them. With regards to the potential for carpooling, the, there was just over two hundred parking spaces there prior to the commencement of construction. And, and I don't recall in the eighteen or nineteen years that the Winspear Centre has been open, any concern with carpooling under the existing arrangement. And I'm not sure what would be different other than there being more, more parking spaces there. The one point I would, I would take and perhaps bring up with the Winspear Centre at this point is they have restricted or taken out of use parking space for carnivals or other uses. And I think given the intention of having built these, these parking spaces, whether they be for employee parking or public or, or overflow for, and, and granted, Mary Winspear has long wanted additional overflow parking for events. I would like to, to at some point negotiate that parking spaces could not be closed for, for other events.
If I could, I'm just gonna add a couple of comments. In the past, it's been pretty obviously the Mary Winspear's parking lot. And it did not have signage that it was free public parking all day. So I do think the context is going to change when that goes up. And we do have people using our streets in some parts of Sydney as a park and ride for the airport and the ferry. This might simply be more convenient for them. So it, that may be a problem as things go along. And with respect to seeing how it goes at the end of the year and the handing out of the employee passes. If the employee parking pass doesn't actually get you anything that free public parking doesn't get. Cause I mean, why, why do I need an employee pass? I can just park there without one. Why is anyone going to go through the effort of actually signing out the pass? And will monitoring the number of passes that got handed out actually be very useful at the end of the year? Even the Mary Winspear patrons, they don't need a pass. I mean, obviously I'm going into the Mary Winspear, I could get one. But now you're gonna make me walk back out to my car and put it on the windshield? No thanks. It's free parking. I, I don't need to do that. So I, I suspect that we, at the end of a year's time, may find that Mary Winspear isn't very keen on handing out those passes anymore. And we may not be getting any benefit from them. Anyway, I'll pass. I've got councillor Garnett, councillor O'Keefe, councillor Rintoul.
Some very good points. And again, I'm Mr. Hypothetical tonight. Worst case scenario, depending on what's happening in our community that day, that parking lot could be completely full very early in the morning. Canada Day, whatever have you. There may be no employee parking spots left. And the whole purpose of designing this was to provide employee parking and get them off the street. It just, it's a circle, circular argument, I know, but, and it's probably not likely to happen, but it could. And, and I just, that seems crazy to me to have an employee, employee public Mary Winspear parking lot where employees can't park because they can't find a spot because there's, we, we're having a successful event in Sydney where all the parking spots are gone. So, I mean, I understand where everybody's coming from and I, and I understand the problems that agree with the trust, but I'm just saying this is just, for me, it just sticks out as something that's, that's a problem with everything that's, that's in the agreement. I mean, at the end of the day, I'll go along with what the majority want to do, but I just want to bring that point up that I think, you know, it's employee parking. That's really what we needed. That's really what we wanted. And we may not even have it in some particular cases.
Councillor O'Keefe.
Well, at the end of the day, we, it's passed already. So, you know, it's, it's going to go through. However, what I'm wondering is, you know, six point three of the agreement does allow for the establishment of rules and regulations to be improved and writing by the, by the town. And so I, I have, I have concerns about the time limit. As councillor Wainwright indicates that there's now, the context is going to be different. There's going to be a sign there. Public parking and, and there's no limit. So for me, that's, that's a concern. I also agree that employee passes, it's going to be hard to monitor whether they're taking it because as you indicate, there's really no incentive for them to get a pass if they can go there anyway. So why go through that? And the other thing that I'm concerned about is enforcement. So what incentive is there for Mary Winspear to expend money on doing enforcement for our portion of the lot if anybody can park there anyway with no, no time limit? And so I guess what I'm thinking is whether there's any opportunity to, I think we need to get this launched and out there. But whether we, there's an opportunity to talk to Mary Winspear to say, these are some of the concerns we have. If they have suggestions as to how we might mitigate some of our concerns and, and see what they might come back with. And in terms of establishing some sort of rules or concept of operation for, for the lot.
Councillor Rintoul.
Thank you. And yeah, I concur with councillor O'Keefe's closing remarks there. I, I agree. It's, it's probably nice for us to have a bit of a wish list and be able to sit down with the Memorial Park Society and, and look to have this evolve. But you're right, it's, it's a signed agreement at this point in time. And so we're very much talking about a wish list. I only further wanted to address, Mr. Chair, the comments around overnight parking and concerns that remain there. There has been for some time a system there of requiring a pass for an overnight vehicle facilitated through the Mary Winspear Centre. And so there was in discussion, no intent that they were going to change that process. So I, I don't necessarily share the concerns around overnight parking being an issue. Thank you.
I hadn't intended to suggest overnight parking being the issue. I was thinking more like day trips. So I've heard a concern about limiting it to three hours. And I'm certainly open to a longer period. I'm just looking for a period that's not long enough to be facilitating that kind of park and ride use. So four hours, five hours, I could live with any of that. Councillor Duncan?
I, I kind of feel like we don't need a time restriction or we don't need to come up with one because it, it's kind of coming up feeling like, like the MPS is not going to be concerned about their site being used for park and ride. Whereas I think they probably would share our concern that if there are people coming and say, parking at six AM and using the site and then coming back on like the ten PM ferry and they've used up all the spaces, their patrons can't access those spaces either. And I feel that they'd probably share our concern about it being filled up for, as a daily park and ride lot. Obviously the overnight parking would take away airport or, or longer term park and riders. But daily park and riders that took up spots all day would take away their patron's spots too. And I feel that would be something they would be monitoring. That would be part of what their enforcement was, was there for. And I can't think how, how they'd be able to tell the difference between a legitimate pa, I mean, I, I can't imagine somebody who was coming to shop in Sydney showing up at seven AM because nothing in Sydney opens until ten AM anyway. So employees who show up for their work shift are pretty much almost always going to show up first. Simply because they're going to show up before the shops open and before, before the shoppers get here. So I, I think, you know, it, it doesn't really need the time restriction to prevent that from happening. And yeah, the, the peak parking times in Sydney are from what, like eleven AM to two PM? And after that, you could park anywhere you want usually, sometimes up to three PM. But so again, I feel like there's, there's, there's four hours in there where parking is tight. And that would be your four hour restriction in the first place. So I, I feel like not too uncomfortable with the idea of just going forward and, and seeing how it rolled out in the first place. I know councillor Garnett's, Garnett's brought forward the, the problem of there being event parking and employees not being able to get parking. But I wonder, I don't know what the difference would be, you know, during, during an event, them getting street parking to go to work. It's gotta be the same problem. So this, at the very least, create, would create an overflow area where, you know, the public, if they were showing up that early, would be parking there instead and, and the employees could now access the streets.
Okay, we've kind of gone around this one and we're obviously not unanimous in our point of view on it. We do understand that anything different than what's in the, the agreement that's in the staff report would require a discussion with MPS and their agreement. So the, a course of action would be for our MPS liaison and staff to speak with MPS about the concerns that were raised tonight and see where it goes and report back to a future committee of the whole.
And if I may for clarification, we're, we're receiving this report for information first and foremost. And the suggestion is then that we have some continued dialogue potentially around this versus, you know, let's, let's get it started and let's, let's work the bugs out.
I think there were more people that were expressing some concerns about the agreement as it stands than were willing to just see how it goes. I could be wrong on that. Mr. Humble?
So just, just again, for clarification on the timing of the completion of the, the parking, we're looking at, I think paving actually was completed on both sides now. We'll be looking at landscaping, irrigation and landscaping going in shortly and then line painting will follow. It'll be done in two phases, the, with the, the west side being completed first and then the east, east side of the road access. The west side, we're looking at completion and ready to be opened, at least for a soft opening on April fifteenth. Okay, with the east side potentially as soon as the beginning of May, the first week of May. So in terms of, I'm just, I'm just pointing that out to council in terms of marketing and promotions and, and starting working with the BIA to get, to get again, the word out to, to the various businesses so that they can advise their employees and the timing and, and that kind of thing. I mean, we want to, we wanted to start that, but if we're going back to the Winspear and having another discussion with respect to some of the concerns that have been raised, I'm not sure if we want to really start ramping up a significant marketing and promotions campaign.
Councillor O'Keefe.
What, what I was going to propose is that we move forward with the opening of the lot and the marketing campaign, but that we have a discussion with the Mary Winspear Centre anyways in the next, I don't know, month or is, is convenient for both parties to bring up the concerns that we have and to see if there's any way of mitigating or addressing whether there's an appetite for them to address, address those things as we move forward. So I'm not proposing that we halt the opening of the lot to renegotiate agreement, but to, to move forward with it. And then subsequent have a, a discussion to bring forth some of the concerns.
With respect to marketing it to the employees, I don't think under any of the scenarios that we, we were discussing that anyone's proposing to restrict the employee parking aspect. So I don't see why there would be any reason to delay the marketing campaign through the BIA, et cetera. Okay, so can we start with a motion to receive the report?
Sorry, can you say, can you say that last point one more time, Mr. Chair?
I, I didn't perceive through the discussion that anyone was proposing any modification to the employee parking aspect that's in the report. So a marketing campaign, you know, to the employers through the BIA, et cetera, trying to promote the parking lot as an employee parking lot. I don't see how the discussion we've been having would limit that in any way. It's a, you know, get on with that. The question is more one of promotion of, of the space as a public parking lot. And I don't think we need to promote the space as event parking for Mary Winspear. They'll probably take care of that on their own.
Through, through the meetings that we had with, with Mary Winspear, there was no intent on their part as we understood it that they would be promoting public parking there.
Yeah.
There's just, there's just going to be a single sign up.
Looking at a single sign at the entrance that indicates Town of Sydney Downtown Employee and Public Parking at the entrance is what they, is what they've agreed to.
So my suggestion would be, can we start with a motion to receive?
I move to receive the report.
Second.
Okay, call the question, all in favor? Both? That's carried. Okay, is there an appetite to ask our liaison to MPS and staff to make the MPS board aware of the concerns that are being expressed tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll see if there's appetite for, so I, I move that we ask our liaisons and staff to discuss with the Mary Winspear, some of the concerns such as possibility of a time limit on parking, issues of enforcement and employee passes, I think to get to your point about employee having something on their, their car.
Okay, so we've got a motion. Do I have a second or?
Second.
Okay, discussion? This is simply asking our liaison to make the board aware of the discussion that happened tonight.
So I'm sure before I get there, they'll have watched the video and they'll be quite familiar with the discussion that we've had at length here. And so yes, I will cautiously, you know, raise some, some concerns from the sense that And so, yes, I will cautiously, you know, raise some concerns from the sense that we have a signed agreement. Council's already agreed to this, just not this council unless we're looking to renege on it or to try and cancel it. But clearly, we can articulate some concerns around having enough parking for employees, and my takeaway from this is, you know, it's something that we are going to want to monitor quite closely, and if we're really concerned with it, then we've got to, I guess, advance that dialogue, certainly.
Go ahead.
And I guess I'll just reiterate, I, I'm not looking, I wouldn't be looking at a full sort of renegotiation of the whole agreement, but whether there's wiggle room or flexibility within the agreement, within the provision for the establishment of rules and regulations in Article six point three that would allow them to address some of the concerns, so not a wholesale.
Okay.
That's what I would propose.
I think the MPS board will benefit by watching the video. So, any further discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Two opposed, pardon me. Okay, that completes that one. Now we have the added item, which was Counselor Fallon's presentation about Artsy.
So, at the late hour, and to get everybody's mind in a completely different frame, Artsy is doing a promotion and looking to engage with the community. So they've got this project on that's going to be happening between the twenty-second and the twenty-eighth of this month, and they're handing out puzzle pieces and asking people to create something on that puzzle piece, and they're gonna have a puzzle wall. So the ask was to come out and hand it, so I had the brilliant idea with my counterpart in Orson, Brett Smith, who's the arts liaison, and so we've got a little bit of a challenge between our councils. So I'm gonna hand out these puzzle pieces and ask each of you to do something with them. I don't care if you crayon or felt-tip pen or cut pictures out of magazine, whatever, and if you really don't feel inspired, then hand it off to one of your kids or your grandkids to complete, but bring it back to me on Monday, and then Brett and I will get a hold of Artsy and make a presentation to them as our council's contribution in support of arts and culture. So it's not a terribly difficult task, and it takes your mind in a completely, and yes, Scott, I know. In a completely different space, and I've even got some for senior staff to...
I fear crayons. I have crayon for you. I don't have any crayon pencils anymore.
And you can put ink on your dog's feet and have him walk across.
Oh, yeah. Excellent. I thought that idea, on our nice white carpet.
And you're gonna be back by Monday?
No, darling. Can you give mine to Terry?
I think you do, too.
You could give one.
I'm pretty sure you can do that and fax it to somebody, Chad.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn, the seconded, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you, we're adjourned.